Item #8, Mr. Chair, is the Budget Call, the Guidelines on the Preparation and Submission of the 2018 Annual Budget. Item #9 of the New Business is the Request Letter from the Naga City Council for Women, requesting for the inclusion of the Naga City Council for Women 2018 Annual Investment Plan. Item #10 of the New Business is the Request from the Naga City Police Office requesting to consider the following: a) the fireworks display and other pyrotechnic materials during the celebration of any occasion and the crafting of an ordinance for the strict implementation of licorban under traslation and mobial procession. And lastly, Mr. Chair, item #11 of the New Business is the Letter from Mr. Romel Oliveros requesting for an Eat Right franchise ISOMO for its approval.
Mr. Chair. Councillor Lito Del Rosario. Before the approval, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, last May 30, during our regular session together with the city officials, we had the chance to ask some... we had the chance to ask Engineer Benja of some concerns regarding his proposal. And during that session, based on the manifestation of Councillor Baldimoro, we gave him 15 days to comply with the requirements of the Sangguyan Panglongsood. Mr. Chair, the period has already elapsed by on last June 14, and we're supposed to read in the agenda, it's supposed to be included in the agenda, the response of Engineer Benja. However, based on my perusal of this agenda, May opo nakabukta. Second, Mr. Chair, during that session also, I manifested that the proposed terms of reference for the establishment of an Eastbound terminal be included in the agenda for today's session. May I ask, Mr. Chair, the Secretary if my recollection is correct? I think there is no need for the Secretary to respond to that question. I can attest to the fact that there was indeed that direction to Engineer Benja and that the corresponding instruction to the Secretary to include in our regular session the subject Terms of Reference. So, are you moving, Councillor Lito Del Rosario, for the inclusion of the Terms of Reference? Yes, may I again reiterate my motion, Mr. Chair, that we include in today's session the proposed Terms of Reference for the establishment of an Eastbound... Under unfinished business. As item #...
#22, Mr. Chair.
And another resolution, Mr. Chair. Because of the failure of Engineer Benja, I am moving that we pass a resolution terminating closing discussions or terminating discussions with Engineer Benja as far as the establishment of the terminal, Mr. Chair, ISOMO business. Yes, Councillor Greg Abonal.
May we know whether we were sent copies of the Terms of Reference, Mr. Chairman?
We... each one of us were furnished copy by email of that Terms of Reference a long time ago. Yes, that's correct. But the four purposes of today's regular session, the Secretary is instructed to make available the Terms of Reference in our respective monitors, Kristin? Under addendum, please. Unless you would request a hard copy thereof. Councillor Rakida Roya? Okay, in which case the Secretary is instructed to furnish each member a hard copy of the proposed Terms of Reference. So, any other manifestations? If none, are we approving the Order of Business as modified? Okay, without objection, the Order of Business as modified is now approved. Thank you, Councillor Elmer Baldimoro.
Order of Business, reading and approval of the minutes of the previous session, minutes of the 37th regular session held on April 4, 2017.
Again, Councillor Elmer Baldimoro.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, may I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the 37th regular session of the 12 Sangguyan Panglongsood held on April 4, 2017, and move for its approval?
Any second, without objection, the same is approved. By the way, we wish to acknowledge the presence of our City Planning and Development Officer, Mr. Wilfredo Prilias Jr. Next item.
Special Business order. The proposed resolution of the Honorable Julian Labadia Jr. designating Barangay Pacol as site of the Rice Processing Center of Naga City.
The Honorable Julian Labadia Jr.?
Mr. Chairman, buot ko lang pong kung ano ng oportunidad na ini na maibitaran masikalikit na segundo-sos minuto ang Assistant Regional Director o ang Regional Technical Director for Operation and Department of Agriculture kang update po kang sa tuyang request tungkol dun sa rice processing center, Mr. Chairman.
You are referring to Mr. Rodel Tornilia?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We are therefore suspending our rules of procedure and request Mr. Rodel Tornilia of the Department of Agriculture to approach the podium.
Magandang umaga po sa lahat ng nandito.
Okay, good morning.
We are glad to inform this body that we have approved the request of the City Government of Naga for one unit rice processing center to be put up in Pacol. For your information, ang rice processing center po is a package of technology consisting of one warehouse measuring 300 square meters with one multi-pass rice mill. The total cost of the warehouse and rice mill is 4.5 million pesos. And then, the package also includes 1 million peso as operating capital to be downloaded to the City Government of Naga and 500 pesos for institutional development, which includes trainings of the people who will be engaged, will manage the rice processing center. And as far as the Department of Agriculture is concerned, aside from the package of the rice processing center, we are committed to develop the RPC recipient as a service provider for our rice farmers in the city and in the neighboring municipalities. So, aside from the interventions that was mentioned, we will also be providing the city with a multiple post-drying pavement measuring 400 square meters, one mini four-wheel drive tractor and one combine harvester to complete the package for a service provider. The only counterpart that we are asking from the City Government is the lot where the center would be put up. As the Honorable Councillor Labadia mentioned a while ago, an area of more or less 1,000 to 2,000 square meters where all these interventions, where all these machineries would be located. So, after validation of the proposal and the sites, we have approved the request. And we are... we would like to inform you that the rice mill for the RPC was already bidet and the building for the warehouse would be bidet on July 5. After that, the construction would be commencing for the area, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any question, any comment from the members of this body? Councillor Greg Abonal.
Sir Chairman, I think this one calls for a celebration. But especially to... with the indulgence of the of Councillor Labadia, I think we may need to express our gratitude in the form of resolution, if not some other things. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councillor Greg Abonal. Any other statement? If none, we will now thank Mr. Rodel Tornilia.
Thank you po.
For gracing our regular session and for giving us that good news, that information. Councillor Rakida Roya?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wish to express gratitude to the action of the Department of Agriculture, particularly the Region 5. My question, Mr. Chair, on the proposed resolution. May we seek the comment of the City Planning and Development Office while he's here, Mr. Chair? So, may I move for suspension of the rules on why we are choosing Pacol specifically?
Okay, the rules remain suspended. We request Mr. Wilfredo Prilias Jr. your comment on the proposed resolution, especially the designation of Pacol as the Rice Processing Center.
Your Honor, actually, this is off the cuff, but I think Pacol is most suitable, is a good location for the facility. I am a resident of the Barangay and I see that there is substantial rice lands in the area. It will benefit the area being one of the pre-urban areas of the city. So, the office fully supports the trust of the DA and the City Government along this way.
Okay, yes, Councillor Julian Labadia Jr.
Thank you for the support, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the support from our City Planning Development Officer. Engineer Mena and Kalengasun texted me, actually, Mr. Chairman. The area is the Naga City Pacol Nursery. Actually, that is in Barangay Carolina, nakakaaglangay lumansin Pacol, barangay Pacol. So, ita-transfer pa ang pangarap ng Carolina, kasi accordingly, itong 4.5 hectares kang sa pagsasaliri ta, nasa Barangay Carolina, Mr. Chairman.
Just the same, the nursery is just located at the boundary of Carolina and Pacol. So, it will not hurt, the location will not hurt the intended beneficiaries.
Okay, thank you, Willie, thank you. Do we have to modify, aside from correcting the location, do we have to modify the proposed resolution by indicating the exact meets and bounds of the area where the center, where the facilities will be constructed? Is there a need for that? None? Okay, so is there... is none? Councillor Labadia Jr.
Ang pag-designate po kang si barangay si site, it will be Carolina 10 Pacol siguro para mas clearer. Unless ikaw ang okay na mangkaroon, Mr. Chairman, sa sa tuyang Assistant Regional Director si area. And at the same time, pa mangkaroon reklamo ang sa tuyang City Agriculture is our ma si Mam Edna and Engineer Kalengasun. So, I would like to move, Mr. Chairman, that on joint and collective motion, we approve the proposed resolution.
On joint and collective motion, the proposed resolution is now approved with the given modification. Okay, next item.
The letter dated June 16, 2017 from the City Mayor requesting for the passage of a resolution expressing the deepest sympathy and sincerest condolences to the bereaved family of the late Ramon Hidalgo Felipe Jr., former Naga City Mayor and former Congressman.
Also, on joint and collective motion, the same is approved. Next item. Yes, Councillor Greg Abonal.
Sir Chairman, the resolution that... condolences that we're expressing, I suggest that it be formatted and be prepared similar to the frames that we did to the previous public officials.
Yes, we will do that. And the Secretary is instructed to ensure that the same is done within the day? Within the day? For possible presentation to the bereaved family anytime thereafter? Okay, next item.
Resolution #4 of the Barangay Council of Triangulo requesting 20,000 financial assistance in connection with their 40th foundation anniversary on June 21.
The Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, Councillor Cecilia Diasis. On joint and collective motion. Next item.
The proposed resolution of the Honorable Jose Serañola earnestly requesting the Philippine Charity Ship Sticks Office through its Chairman, Honorable Jose Jorge Corpus, to allocate one unit ambulance for the Naga City Hospital.
The Honorable Jose Serañola.
In our local headquarter meeting last week, this was unanimously endorsed through this representation to be carried on on this session. So, this proposed resolution earnestly requesting the Philippine Charity Shipstick to its Chairman, Honorable Jose George I Corpus, allocate one unit of ambulance for the Naga City Hospital.
Without objection, the same is approved. Next item.
The proposed resolution of the Honorable Jose Serañola earnestly requesting the Philippine Charity Ship Sticks Office through its Chairman to allocate one unit clinical automated chemistry analyzer machine for the use of our Lady of Lourdes Infirmary in Barangay Carolina.
Again, the Honorable Jose Serañola.
The same proposed resolution, Mr. Chair, was unanimously endorsed by the local headquarter and I read it. Resolution earnestly requesting the Philippine Charity Shipstick Office through its Chairman, Honorable Jose George I Corpus, to allocate one unit of clinical automated chemistry analyzer machine for the use of our Lady of Lourdes Infirmary in Barangay Carolina, City of Naga.
Any second, without objection, the same is approved. Thank you, Councillor Serañola. The Honorable Gregory Abonal.
Sir Chairman, may we just... what the clinical automated chemistry analyzer machine will be able to do?
We will have to ask the Honorable Jose Serañola.
Really does all the chemistry, like cholesterol, fasting blood sugar, urine acid, and so many, many procedures in the laboratory. And that is the modern one now, being used in all hospital.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Serañola. No other question? If none, we proceed to the next item.
The letter dated June 7, 2017 from Mrs. Annabel Vargaso ICCSWD requesting for a resolution authorizing the Honorable City Mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development with respect to the implementation of emergency shelter assistance.
Anyone on this? Councillor Cecilia Diasis. Okay, on joint and collective motion? Okay, same is approved. Next item.
Endorsement dated June 5, 2017 from the Office of the City Mayor endorsing the draft memorandum of agreement to be entered into by between the city and SM Prime Holdings for authority.
The Honorable Greg Abonal as Chairman of the Committee on Senior Citizen.
Sir Chairman, there are forthcoming recommendations regarding the arrangements we have with SM Cinema. I would move for differing this for next session so we can review and see whether we can accommodate request. Let me just tell you the situation, Mr. Chairman. Apparently, arrangements or at least preliminary talks have been made with SM Cinema management. First, to change the fixed Monday-Tuesday schedule. In other words, I understand that SM Cinema is also open to any time during the week. Secondly, to any time during the day. I do not think that's contained here. This appears to be a repeat of the previous agreement. We'd like to be able to see whether indeed they can be included already, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so this item is deferred until the same is recommended for inclusion by the Committee on Senior Citizen. Next item.
The letter dated May 30, 2017, Comision of the City Mayor requesting for authority to negotiate and enter into a MOA with the Department of Health Operated Camarino Treatment and Rehab Center following the procedures under pertinent laws and subject for ratification.
May we hear from the Chairman of the Committee on Health on this? Councillor Jose Serañola.
Well, we really don't know what is in here, Mr. Chair. So, I think this must be referred to the committee together with maybe with the laws and ordinances so we can do it as fast as we can.
Okay, before our action on this, the Honorable Cecilia Diasis.
Jan Bogat, the Life Improvement through Friendly Education Counseling Center. It's just an authority, Mr. Chair. Actually, we really have that program regards with outpatient and counseling services of the city when it comes to the drug, Naga City Dangerous Drugs Program. So, it's just... may I request that we give the authority to the mayor because we badly needed the services for the rehabilitation of the drug dependence.
Again, Councillor Jose Serañola.
Well, this is a contract, Mr. Chair. Then there is no harm if this one be referred to the committee before we act on it.
Can we refer this first to the Committee on Health and Laws and Ordinances with the Committee on Health as the lead committee? Okay, so, next item.
The endorsement dated June 7, 2017 from the Office of the City Mayor endorsing the letter of Ms. Maria May Martin, President Nepro Sinergies Incorporated, informing that the Naga City Dialysis Center is now operational and ready to serve the city constituents with attached copy of the draft implementing guidelines for the operation of the Dialysis Center extending credit line to the City Government of Naga.
Can we also request... can we also refer this to the Committee on Health? Okay, so, this is referred to the Committee on Health. Next item.
The endorsement dated June 16, 2017 from the City Mayor endorsing the letter from the Dep Ed Naga City Teachers and Employees Association Incorporated requesting that the teachers' cost of living allowance be charged against the general fund of the local government.
We are first endorsing this to Committee on Appropriations considering that we still have to determine the source of fund among others. Okay, next item.
Unfinished business, the letter of invitation to Mr. Willie Prilias in today's regular session with respect to the activities that have been taken in the preparation of the 2018 annual budget and the annual investment program. We also invited the City Budget Officer on this matter, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the rules are suspended. We acknowledge the presence of Mr. Frank Mendoza, our Budget Officer, as well as Engineer Palmiano, the fourth. May we request Mr. Willie Prilias Jr. to approach the podium.
Thank you, your honors. This pertains to the decision of the Sangguyan to return the proposed AIP for 2018 that we submitted. The request to reconsider the decision is explained in my letter dated June 13. So, briefly, may I recapitulate the reasons why I'm requesting for a reconsideration of the decision? First is that we are in the first year of implementation of the new policy. If you remember it right, the policy was adopted November and it is only going to be effective starting this year. And of course, just like any other national policy or any policy changes, there are adjustments. And the office believes that it's not unreasonable to make certain concessions or flexibilities in regard to the dates. Second is that the draft AIP we submitted is in fact not yet complete because for the executive side, the departments and offices, we have already completed around 33 plus... close to 40 have already submitted. The only ones not submitted are the statutory obligations of the City Government, which we can get from the City Budget Office. This pertains to the loans we... the City Government has to pay next year. The various special purpose appropriations, in fact, some of them after we submitted the document, approached the office as to what to do. For example, again, I'll... For example, Ginawang Nagenyo and the women's, uh, office, and our recommendation is to write the Sanggunean for reconsideration so that it can be integrated. And of course, the Sanggunean Pangluso, uh, also is not yet reflected in the AIP. So the position of the office is that it's an opportunity for us to make, have a more complete AIP so that we can, um, move this thing forward. The third is, is not an excuse, your honor, but a statement of fact that the new policy requires the approval of an AIP before a budget call can be actually issued. So, um, we are kind of in a, between, uh, the devil in the deep blue sea. Of course, I have to admit and I have to, uh, be, I, I'm willing to be held accountable for the late submission, but, um, the, the fact before us is that we have to have an AIP that needs to be approved, and that is the reason why the, the request for reconsideration of your decision is being made, Your Honor.
Okay. Any question? Any comment from the members of this body? Yes, Counselor Julian Labadia Junior?
Uh, siguro, Mister Chairman, ang request talang siguro kung pwede para magkaigawa kitang, uh, pero ispidi disposition kang issue on the budget for 2018. Can we come up with, uh, siguro sarong committee which will be composed of the Secretary of the Sanggunean Pangluso, the Budget Officer, and the CPDO, and i-pipier giraray? Do, aramta Mister Chairman, na ikaw kitang inaapod na budget process na sinusunod, baka makakatabang Mister Chairman ang tulong persona si Mister Mendoza, Mister Prilius, and Mister Dila Torre for a speedy disposition, considering itong mga kaipuhan ta, uh, again before the approval, kung ano pa man, si AIP dapat yaon na muna, and then si halik sa parte kang, kang budget or sa accounting office, aramta si amount na dapat yong makukuha kang city government. So maybe these three, she, three, three membership, Mister Chairman, will be chaired by the Committee on Appropriation by the Honorable Nene Diazis, Mister Chairman.
Counselor Salvador Del Castillo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Abu pala ni Kaputan. Um, first, uh, we are talking of the 2018 annual investment program. So, uh, may I know, aside from the, uh, recurring personnel services and, uh, maintenance and other operating expenses, what are the major expenditure items for capital outlays for 2018?
Your Honor, those... Those were spelled out.
Thank you, Counselor Del Castillo.
Um, those were spelled out, Your Honor, in the, in the document that we, we submitted. Um, in fact, I made a, a presentation last week on, onto the highlights of this. Um, mostly, this were lifted out.
Is there a separate document, uh, listing the, the, the subject, uh, of Counselor Del Castillo's concern? The major expenditure items? Um, we, we have, uh, so many in the list, but Counselor Del Castillo is after the major expenditure items.
There is none yet, Your Honor. Um, the, what, what the office did is to merely, um, use the form prescribed by the DBM, and the form does not actually allow us to highlight the major expense items. What, what we did is to come up with a summary. So there is, um, a summary as regard the personnel services, the MOE, and then the totals for the capital investments. So at the end of this point, those, those are what we have, Your Honor.
Okay. There is a budget call that, uh, is scheduled on June 22, is that correct?
Uh, I think it is the budget forum.
Ah, the bu- budget forum. That will be on?
The 21st.
21st. So tomorrow. That will be tomorrow. And then the budget call is going to be made when? Within this week, after the budget forum? Yes, Mister Frank Mendoza?
Uh, the budget call was already issued by the City Mayor last June 16.
June 16?
Yes.
Although the rule is that the budget call is supposed to be issued after the approval of the AIP, is that correct?
That's the proper procedure, uh, Mister Chair.
Okay. What will be the effect? The consequence? If a budget call is already made, a budget forum is already conducted without the AIP being approbiate by the Sanggunean?
Based on the latest circular on the harmonization of planning and budgeting, uh, the budget call should be issued before the, no, no, after the AIP. Uh, but if you look at the process, the AIP is needed by each department for them to guide in their budget preparation. Paano po si proceso? Aliba, sarong department, let's say solid-based management, they will look at the list in the approved AIP for the PPAs, programs, projects, and activities relating to the mandate of their office. So ko korono ni da to, garbage collection, SLF, closure, et cetera. And for, for each program, project, or activity, they passing na magibong budget, they would prepare their, the respective PMP, uh, Project Procurement Management Plan. Let's say for the closure, ah, magibusin ng PMP. Ano pang komposisang ng PMP? Basically, iya po si mga gagas du sun para ma-close si basurahan. Kumbaga, ang PMP would detail the expenditure, uh, crude do, drug, et cetera. And for each expenditure, they would be classified into budget accounts, and those budget accounts, pag tinatalto, yun po to si makompost kang budget proposal kang department. So the AIP is needed for preparing the PMP and coming up with a budget proposal. Now, while the rule requires budget call to be issued after AIP, selling ko po, we can do, daw na medyo madelay siya, provided, pag prepare kang, opisina kang mga budget proposal, ebase dumasan approved AIP. Tanganing maestablish itong link between plan and budget. Anangyari ka sa toya, nagribong budget, mapas AIP. So kanya-kanya, ang AIP, pig extract na lang dumasan naman na budget, medyo po baligtad si process. The proper process is AIP, prepare the procurement plan, uh, consolidate the budget para establish one link.
Okay. Counselor Julian Labadia Junior, Counselor Greg Abonal, and then Counselor Miller Rakid Arroyo.
That's why, Mister Chairman, si, uh, kung pwede si, magkaigawa kitang, si proposal ko subago na para day na magkaigwa paning, uh, posibling komplikto, pat, pag magporma kitang committee, Mister Chairman, na pamamayohan nga ni Counselor Nene, and then ang member si Counselor Min, uh, si Mister Frank Mendoza bilang budget officer, sa si Willie Prilius bilang, uh, City Planning Development Officer ta, and at the same time, Mister Chairman, si Mister Hill Dila Torre. Kasi kung nahihiling ko, Mister Chairman, pero may komplikto na eh di sa pagsubmit, kaya niyong, uh, letter na ini. Uh, in the very first place, malinaw man, dapat magsunod kita sa budget process. Uh, munyan, uh, para maavoid na si mga possible conflict in the near future, munyan palang, Mister Chairman, pormaun ta na ining committee para, para iyo na magsuggest sa executive and sa legislative to harmonize, considering munyan palang, Mister Chairman, nahiling ta na na may problema. O habot taman ni magkaigwa na namaning, dahil lang sa sitwasyon na ini, pero siempre, si dirito ta, Mister Chairman, katsanggunean Pangluso, nahiling ko dapat masunod man, dahil kita nagsusunod sa budget process. Munyan, kung day na sunod, may komplikto. Nagtataon na kitang munyan, Mister Chairman, ng, uh, proposal para maavoid ta na iniyong, uh, mga masunod na hero, ta gusto talang iitama ang bagay, Mister Chairman. There is a representative from the executive and there is a representatin, representative from the legislative, Mister Chairman.
Okay. Counselor Greg Abonal?
Mister Chairman, um, if my recollection is accurate, the request for the city planning officer to be here today was occasioned by what happened last week. Last week, last session, Mister Chairman, we were, uh, given a timetable for the preparation of the budget or something similar, but what it said was that the AIP was supposed to have been approved according to the presentation by June 7. That was in the chart. Um, if we could flash that, we will see that, uh, that item indicated approval of the AIP by June 7. The ironic thing was that the approval was scheduled for June 7, but that the letter from the CPDO was submitted only June 9. And we were supposed to act on it already on June 13. There, I think, on the second line, approval of the AIP by the local Sanggunean, June 7, nakalampas na po yan dahil we were meeting on June 13. Now, be that as it may, what is required, as it now appears, is the approval of the AIP. Akun ta na, late na naman, medyo lahos na naman. But tomorrow, kung mag-oorientation si budget officer that already presumes na inaakut na ining budget call submitted by the City Mayor supposedly dated, uh, what is it, 16 or something? Um... Yung, yung AIP as submitted, Mister Chairman, has gone through many long preparations and has been presented to at least two major bodies. Um, if it therefore be in order, I would move for the approval of the AIP para makpadagos na kita.
Okay. We will go the, uh, we will go back to your motion, Counselor Greg Abonal, but for the meantime, we will have to listen to what the Honorable Miller Rakid might say.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Actually, it's a question, Mister Chair. I'm just wondering, uh, as to the reason of returning, for returning the AIP to the CPDO, how we returned it because it did not meet the deadline? Was it the reason for returning the matter because that's what stated in the letter? Was it the reason why we returned it to him?
There might have been a misunderstanding, but I think we were after, uh, knowing from Mister Wilfredo Prilius Junior or from Mister Frank Mendoza, uh, as to the, uh, effect or consequence of us not being able to approve the AIP based on the timeline given us, which is June 7. Of course, understandably, insofar as we are concerned, we should not be blamed, uh, because the AIP was only received on June 9. We were supposed to approve the AIP earlier on June 7, but the, uh, document was received only on June 9, and our, uh, next regular session after that is June 13. So we are after the consequence, the effect, on, uh, not being able to approve the AIP based on the timeline given by the DBM, is this given by DBM? So principally, that's what we want to find out. Yes, Counselor Rakid Arroyo?
So it's clear, Mister Chair, that, uh, the reason for returning the matter wasn't , uh, technical or procedural. We did not actually return the AIP, only that we are, um, asking from Mister Prilius what would be the consequence of the late submission of such AIP.
I, I, I think that should be the main, uh, reason.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
At this point, Your Honor, um, I cannot second guess the DBM, but, uh, I think we can, we can argue the, the points I made in the, in the letter. This is the first year, and of course, um, as with any major policy change, certain, um, considerations will, will have to be made. I think what is important is to, to follow the, the flow of the, the, the activities. Uh, for instance, um, uh, the, the, the new regulations require that the AIP be approved first before a budget call is issued. And at the same time, um, for instance, uh, the, the budget forum can be held as, as late as July 5 if we are to follow the timeline. So our, our request for the Sanggunean is to, um, reconsider decision to return and then, uh, hopefully approve, and not in its current form, but by including the other missing, um, items. For instance, the statutory obligations which the budget office is, is ready to provide us, the status of the special purpose appropriations that, uh, were not captured in the document. And of course, the AIP for the Sanggunean Pangluso, which up to this point, is not yet reflected in the AIP. So that, that's the position, uh, taken by, by the office, Your Honor.
Okay. Counsel, Counselor Del Castillo?
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Actually, uh, Mister Chair, uh, a while ago, the Honorable Labadia is proposing for the creation of a committee.
Come again, Counselor Del?
A while ago, Mister Chair, uh, Counselor Labadia is proposing for the creation of a special committee.
Special committee?
Yeah. Um, to handle this particular matter.
Will that not further delay our disposition?
I believe, Mister Chair, that, uh, we should, uh, task the existing local finance committee created under the Local Government Code to handle all these, uh, all these things related to, uh, uh, budgeting matters, uh, that, that, uh, local finance committee is already existing. We should, they should only activate or, uh, meet regularly so that, uh, we will meet the timelines, uh, being, um, um, given to us by, uh, higher authorities. Para day na, kumbaga day na kita, para kapang-kapang, pag kaipuhan na mag-act.
Okay. If we follow your proposal, what would be the task that will be given to the local finance committee?
Actually, Mister Chair, ang local finance committee, ikwananing mandate ko, anong dapat dibugo?
With, with respect to AIP, because, uh, what is before us is the AIP that, uh, we are supposed to approve?
Yes. Um, siguro, not for this, this, uh, for 2018, Mister Chair, but for future, uh, preparation of budget.
Ah, okay.
Siguro in addition to the, uh, to the task, as mandated to the local finance committee as provided for under the Local Government Code, dapat, uh, idirekta na manggirare ang, uh, local finance committee na magtabang nasinda sa preparation kan annual investment program for future budget obesity.
That is for 2019 onwards?
Yes.
Okay. But, but for the meantime, insofar as the 2018 AIP is concerned, we are being asked to act upon it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
But, uh, may, may sarong lang ang konseren, Mister Chair. Uh, because we are, uh, required to approve the annual investment program. At piha, di ko, Mister Chair, baka may effect niyo sa budget authorization base for 2018. Baka, pag ina-probtan niyo, maanakitang lewe sa approval kan 2018 budget. Ang medyo may problema, Mister Chair. Dahil day tanahiling saruk-saruk, si itong mga capital expenditures for 2018, then pag inilawigan to man sa executive budget, baka day tanapiling baguhon.
Any comment from the budget officer or from Mister Wilfredo Prilius Junior? Or, or on that particular statement of Counselor Del Castillo?
Uh, totoo yan. Kung ano yang sa AIP, yan ang pupunduhan as in iyan pong execute. The reason being that the AIP is actually emanating from the Comprehensive Development Plan. So, uh, nagiramduman ko po, si Counselor Mayes naghanap kitang expected results. Uh, expected results, mababa ta do, mababa sa ta duma sa Comprehensive Development Plan. The CDP, may mga goals po yan, may, may corresponding na local development investment plan for the same period as the CDP. Ang laman po kang LD, Local Development Investment Program, yun si mga programs, uh, projects, activities, nagigibo, na implement, tanganing mapangyari itong mga goal sa CDP. And every year, and totoo ko yan, ang local finance committee, iya, iyon ang magibok ang AIP. And the way to do it is to extract the AIP from the LDIP. Yan ang tamang proseso, tang LDIP halik sa CDP. So AIP is an implementation kang CDP. So itong hinahanap na expected results that can be read from the Comprehensive Development Plan. Now, ang, ang worry, mawaraning lewe ang city, baga, let's say, baga gasto outside the AIP. Tamak po yan. Reason, there must be a very tight link between plan and budget and execution. Depi di pika para execute, ta si ma'am sa plano. Day si panangasug, ma'gi bununyan pupundo anta. That is wrong.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
19, ang iniisip ng nyan kang local finance, kundi as early as munyan, ayuso na kang local finance committee, si big real na problema, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. May ano from Mr. Frank Mendoza other than the Sanggunean Panlulso? What other offices, departments of the city that have not yet submitted their proposed AIP?
Actually, Your Honor, si gabuspong departments and offices, Executive Department, kumpleto na. The last one was the City Legal. Pero mayo na po, si Huri, itong special purpose appropriation, like nagduman si, sa Ginawangna Ganyo, naghagad ka reyo. Tapos ito pong sa Women. Tapos ang mayo pa po?
I think Ginawangna Ganyo had already submitted its proposed AIP.
But not to us, Your Honor, because we already submitted the ones we consolidated to you.
So, let us be clarified. Those which have not yet submitted?
Ang mayo lang po are the special purpose appropriations.
SPA?
Tapos itong Ginawangna Ganyo, tapos itong sa Women.
Ginawangna Ganyo Program, Women.
If I recall it right, pati si sa Children, pero mayo pa man po?
Children.
As it's statutory obligations in the Sanggunean Panlulso?
Children, statutory obligation. When do we expect the submission of this?
I, they were supposed to submit, I wrote a memo dated May 31, thanking 33, and then listing down around nine departments that were not able to submit. So I was expecting that after the memo, they are going to submit. So, the submission should have been before the June 9 date that we submitted the document.
Okay. Let us take this up one by one. Insofar as SPA is concerned, can this not be prepared by the Budget Officer? If no one is submitting yet, insofar as SPA is concerned, can we just adopt the 2017 SPA?
Possibly, but the best approach would be to go back to the stakeholders of its corresponding SPA.
Yes, but if they are not submitting, what can we do? Okay? So we will just adapt the previous year, okay? Can you submit to us this afternoon the SPA? Frank?
We can submit the, yes, we can.
Okay. So for SPA, care of Frank, this afternoon. For the Ginawangna Ganyo Program, there is already one, already submitted. So this was already submitted? Okay. For NCCW, already submitted today, okay? For children?
Mr. Chair, we're supposed to do a workshop for this, but given the situation, we'll submit today.
Today? For this statutory obligation, can it be submitted today?
Yes.
Okay. For SP also today? Can we therefore hold a special session tomorrow? Okay? Special session tomorrow at 9 o'clock? Yes, Councilor Greg Abonel?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of the SPA, I would recommend that those who did not submit one for 2018, the Budget Officer will assign to them either, either the previous 20...
2017.
The 2017 allocation or the actual 2016 expenditure or use, whichever is lower. Meaning, Mr. Chairman, pigpi-perpetuate na kaya ang mga allocation sa kanila, na dayman nga niya nang kakagaramit. In other words, so actual expenditure lang ninda for 2016 would be the basis for allocating total days in the next submit.
Okay. Can we agree on that? Frank? Frank? The option for SPA is the 2017 allocation or 2016 actual expenditure?
Whichever is lower.
Ah, Mr. Chair, is that a query or what? Then you can add on, so she first part.
That's my recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Yung SPA, kaya so Budget Officer na ang ma-assign, so to speak, today nag-sarabmit. So, mga day nang sarabmit, ano ang i-a-assign sa kanila? Either, either the 2017 allocation or the actual expenditure of 2016, whichever is lower.
Whichever is lower, okay. We will adapt the suggestion, whichever is lower. Councilor Del Castillo?
As far as the special purpose appropriations is concerned, I believe that we cannot adapt that policy. Why? Because there are certain appropriations which are mandated by law that should be incorporated in the yearly appropriation of the city. First is the 5% Calamity Fund. Should be based on the total estimated income for the budgeteer. So, definitely, we cannot adapt the previous years amount.
We understand your position, Councilor Del Castillo. In fact, we have listed six items that are to be submitted to us, and SPA is listed differently from statutory obligations. We are talking about SPA separate from statutory obligations.
So, with that exclusion of statutory contractual obligation, Mr. Chair, I will agree to the proposal of the Honorable Abonel with another condition, that those offices which cannot submit on time their proposal for inclusion in the annual investment program should not be given capital outlets. That's an additional punishment for them, so that they would follow the rules and regulations.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Del Castillo. So, can we go back to my suggestion that we conduct a special session tomorrow so that we can already act on the AIP for 2018? Are you all in agreement? Tomorrow at 9 o'clock? Okay. So we will have a special session? Yes, the secretary will require all the members of the local finance committee during our special session tomorrow, including Mr. Willy Prilius Jr. Okay? As prescribed by our rules, we are not required to wear our barong or... Okay? So with that, thank you, Willy. Thank you, Frank. Councilor Greg Abonel?
Mr. Chairman, there is a scheduled meeting budget forum for tomorrow afternoon. On the assumption that the AIP is not approved in the morning, what would the Budget Office do? Me, I think the Budget Office, on the assumption that the AIP is not yet approved tomorrow, the Budget Office can still continue with the budget call forum. After all, most of this will be procedural, not really based on whatever may have been approved. Kasi, sa ilin ko, pwede mapumakpadagos whether or not we approve the AIP tomorrow.
Yes, that's correct, okay? Is there any other matter you wish to take up insofar as this item is concerned? If none, we will now proceed to the next.
The latest update of June 13, 2017, inviting to this regular session, City Engineer Leon V. Palmyano de Forte with respect to the status of the repair of the GMR Coliseum.
The rules remain suspended. Engineer Palmyano kindly approached the podium. Frank, do not leave yet. Willy, you are excused, thank you.
Good morning, Your Honors.
Good morning.
With respect to the repair of the Coliseum, Mr. Chair, we already have prepared the program of works. We have submitted them to the Chairman of the BAC, Mr. Mongoso, for bidding, Mr. Chair.
When did you submit the program of works?
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Chair, about a month or two ago.
That means in April.
Very likely, Mr. Chair.
April. So any update from the bids and awards committee? Because I understand you are a member of the BAC.
Mr. Chair, insofar as I am, as I know, they are still looking for a budget for the repair, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Frank Mendoza? Don't we have fund? Don't we have budget for the repair?
The city mayor called the meeting among, I think the office of the city engineer was represented, myself and Mr. Mongoso and several others. We discussed the remaining projects to be implemented for the remainder of the year, and it includes the rehabilitation of the Coliseum. So that project is for bidding. Probably within the month, it would be posted, and implementation will be after a month. The notice to proceed will be sent after a month.
You understand that the longer the repair is done, the more damage there is to the building and to the facilities inside.
That's true, Mr. Chair. The initial scope of this project for bidding is only for the roofing in the amount of around 3 million pesos. Ugapapong ibang ping proposal, city engineer, itong cladding, bintana, saka flooring, but the total amount would be more than 7 million. Medyo kulang na po si funding, kaya inutong po si Atop.
Yes, Councilor Del Castillo?
I believe, Mr. Chair, that we should prioritize this repair of the Coliseum. It will remember, ikaw kitang 230 million na surplus, na big submit sa Sanggunean. But unfortunately, dahil kabaliyan repair kang Coliseum, cuman sa silistaan. In the, as of now, ikaw pang remaining amount unappropriated.
We have a lump sum appropriation for infrastructure, for civic works.
That's aside, that's aside, Mr. Chair.
Had this been exhausted already, Frank? Had this been exhausted already, the lump sum appropriation for civic works, infrastructure?
Ugapapong balanse, as of yesterday, there's around 13 million. But that amount was also included when the mayor made a list of projects for implementation. So I would presume that that may have been used up by the list. Only 3 million was allocated, and that would be charged against the Local Disaster Risk Reduction Management Fund.
Who decides if a particular project is to be included for bidding?
Actually, this should have been settled in the preparation of the AIP and in the budget preparation. Dapat pagpupalangan taon, aram na kung ano si mga i-execute, implement. Sanggunean kaya, yun na si, si gini-gipot ang komisyon luwas sa plano, kaya...
Is the Chairman of the BAC involved in the decision as to which project is to be bided already or not?
At this time, it is the mayor who would decide, who decides, subject to availability of funds.
But there is a fund?
Yes.
What do we do? Councilor Del Castillo and then Councilor Rento?
Nagangangala sa komisyon, kung tanutan, magpaparahalo ini. It will remember before the end of the year, na approve rantaan 2017 budget. And we also understand na covering insurance ang Coliseum. So pwedeng i-advance kang ciudad, si gastuson para sa repair kang Coliseum. Tangeri, dyan napangpara, lala, si problema sa lao. So, 'yan lang ang pinagangalas, Mr. Chair, kapag nga, kapag ngaan na kan taon, dahil pa narirerever si Atop, na 'yung pinakaimportante, tangeri mapreserv.
And the amount needed is only 3 million?
And the amount is 3 million. Pag nag-request pasatuya na 230 million, kaya po ni Afuray. Mas kinagawa naman 10 million, na ipasarakan inut, na pakaray na si Coliseum, dahil nakulang pa para turo munyan. So, may, may, karamay sala sa priority, pag-prioritize, Mr. Chair, kan mga proyekto. Yung nagluluas.
Councilor, thank you, Councilor Del Castillo. Councilor Rento and Councilor Baldimoro?
Chairman, actually, the question is, I understand that the Coliseum is an insured facility. So my question now is, what happens now to the efforts of claiming from the insurance company?
If I recall it right, last February, I personally coordinated with GSIS with assistance of bars. Tasin na po ang sibot na gusto ayos ang Coliseum. As in, pigkontak me man po si adjuster, ito mismo nag-hiling kang Coliseum na representative kang GSIS. Big apot mo sin, kung pwede ng hiroon, as sabi ninda, after, siguro mga two weeks or three weeks, nag-respan officially, pwedeng hiroon. Tatapos na sin da mag-evaluate katong damage. So that's when we...
That was when?
Around February.
February.
And then we informed the city engineer that they could already prepare the program of work for the rehabilitation.
Okay.
Advance, and then later on, we could reimburse from them?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Baldimoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since po nasabi na we could advance, why not go on with the complete rehabilitation? Kung dayman, Mr. Chair, kung pigallocate lang itong sa roofing, sa ilin ko, mayong use mangirari ang Coliseum. So, kung kulang ang pundo, may isuggest na roofing plus the flooring. Mas kihuri na siguro itong mga windows. Basta, maayos si Atop, maayos si flooring para po magamit ang Coliseum. And may I know, Mr. Chair, how much it cost to the repair of the flooring?
Engineer, Engineer Palmyano?
Mr. Chair, the total estimated cost for the repair of the entire facility, Mr. Chair, is about 11.2 million.
That... That will include the...
The roofing, the flooring, everything.
Include that, Mr. Chair?
But the initial instruction to us, Mr. Chair, was to leave the flooring first and do the other repair works. It costs about 7 million and therefore the flooring costs about 4 million, roughly, Mr. Chair. Now, the new instruction is to do the roofing first, which is about 3 million.
Mr. Chair? Among the priorities, the main reason is the roof. The Coliseum itself, primary use is the floor, the basketball court. Why on the 11 million word, the 7 million intended for repair, the main reason is the flooring? What will be used on the Coliseum if we repair its other parts without repairing the basketball court?
Engineer, would you like to answer the question of Consular Baldimoro?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I cannot comment on that.
Why not?
The decision on the works to be done is always emanating from the mayor, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we will have to talk to the mayor, okay. Any other comment? If none, thank you Engineer Palmeano, thank you Mr. Frank Mendoza. Yes, sir, Consular Greg Abonel.
Mr. Chairman, while we are on the subject of the Coliseum, I am informed that that is listed as an economic enterprise and yet we are losing about 10 million every year. At this point, I would think that there may have to be a more direct, hands-on administration of the unit of the enterprise. By direct administration, I think a manager has to be assigned. That may be the initial step towards at least breaking even. The maintenance, Mr. Chairman, the maintenance, it has reached 2 million. And yet, and yet we are transferring funds to the tune of 10 million. Just to keep it operating, there may have to be a more direct legislative action to situate that the Coliseum is indeed managed.
Can we expect from you, Consular Greg Abonel, a concrete proposed ordinance to achieve the purpose?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that will have to be done with, in consultation with the Budget Officer as to the question which one should be declared as economic enterprises and which one should not be. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Consular Greg. Consular Raked Arroyo?
Related to that subject matter, Mr. Chair, may I move that we task the City Properties Committee to look into possible arrangements by which the objective of making the JMR Coliseum really an economic activity or enterprise for the city and that the committee may recommend such measure to the public if the Chair of the Committee on City Properties is willing.
Consular Del Castillo?
It's part of our job, Mr. Chair, so... If I can say something?
Okay, okay. And towards that end, I think the course of action that the Honorable Greg Abonel wants to take may help. Okay, so we will have to await for that. Okay, okay, okay. So we proceed to the next item?
The report of the Committee on Laws or...
Would you like to take a break? Okay, we take a break.
Business Communicators Philippines for its exemplary of leadership in the field of public service. Mayor Bongat with his game-changing leadership braced by solid foundation of good governance is expected to continue leading his beloved city to greater heights. Competitiveness and livability has been the city government's focus since Mayor Bongat assumed office in July 2010. The efforts can be summed up in our "Help Your City" agenda which stands for: Help, Health, Housing and the Urban Poor; Education, Arts, Culture and Sports Development; Livelihood, Employment and Human Development; Peace and Order and Public Safety; Cleanliness and Environmental Protection; and Transparency, Accountability and Good Governance. Truly, Naga City has evolved into a community that is worth living enjoyable and sustainable. However, the most important element of Naga City is its people. So, the city government exerts extra effort in providing and sustaining programs for the various sectors. Aside from the multi-awarded Naga City People's Council, NCPC, which is the primary venue for participation in governance by the organized sectors, the city maintains development and programs for its urban poor, EWDs, senior citizen, youth and women. These programs, offices and organizations have become institutional expressions of the care and attention provided by the city government to every Nagenyo, Nagenya. Just recently, The Manila Times has chosen Naga as one of the top 10 model livable cities in the country. Naga City beyond being livable is well on its way to being lovable city, inspiringly livable and adorable indeed.
Naga City 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 Naga City
I believe that there's so much to share and learn. And by way of this special sisterhood partnership with our cities, it will not only open doors for opportunities for exchange in governance, commerce, tourism, education, environment, livelihood, youth and sports development, culture and the arts, heritage conservation, social services and citizens empowerment, but also foster the blending of two cultures, a heritage city and a pilgrim city. So on behalf of the city government of Naga, thank you very much to the city government of Vigan headed by Mayor Carlo and Vice Mayor Lourdes Bakiran and the entire officialdom of the city of Vigan for this golden opportunity to be sister with the city of Naga.
Historically, we are twins whose biblical codes can be traced to the papal bull entitled "Super Specula Militante Secrecia", issued by Pope Clement VIII on August 14, 1595, that established the Spanish colonial cities of Nueva Caseres and Nueva Segovia, making our respective territories the first four royal cities in the Philippines that include Manila and Cebu.
Viva la Naga!
Viva!
I receive a gathering of the faithful of God.
We are here, we are proud. We want the world to come to us and be a part of our hopes, of our dreams, of our new beginning, we will make a different star. We will now open up our door. I see the light you've never seen before. Come feel the vibrance, come hear a shout. Experience magic come to the south. With one thought, city will glow from you. What you've been looking for, we have it too. With our commitment, we want you to know that we are here and we're about to show. That Naga smiles to the world.
Naga smiles.
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 Naga smiles. To the world.
Naga City in the Bicol Region has been known for its evolving unique governance paradigms and local governance programs. In fact, it has been recognized by various national and international institutions receiving numerous awards for these achievements. The city leadership with the people's art and support continues to inspire creativity, participation and productivity. Like his predecessor, the late DILG secretary Jesse M. Robredo, incumbent Mayor John G. Bongat continues to bring honor to the city. The latest of which, among others, is Naga's being a judge for two consecutive years, 2015 to 2016, as the country's overall number one most competitive component city. Naga was likewise chosen in 2013 and 2016 as one of the top next wave cities of the Philippines. Also in 2014, the Lee Kuan Yew Institute of Public Policy of the National University of Singapore recognized Naga's ICT-driven project entitled "Using ICT for Civic Engagement Towards Responsive Decision-Making" as the most inspiring innovation in e-government and participatory innovations in Asia. Mayor Bongat's aggressive pro-investment platform has yielded positive results. In 2014, BLGF certified that Naga has developed a strong local revenue base from real property and business taxes because of its robust academy controlling a 44% share in the total revenues of all seven cities in the Bicol Region. A feat that remains unparalleled to date. To capital, Mayor Bongat himself received in 2016 the prestigious CEO Excellent Award given by the International Association of Business Communicators Philippines for its exemplary of leadership in the field of public service. Mayor Bongat with his game-changing leadership braced by solid foundation of good governance is expected to continue leading his beloved city to greater heights. Competitiveness and livability has been the city government's focus since Mayor Bongat assumed office in July 2010. The efforts can be summed up in our "Help Your City" agenda which stands for: Help, Health, Housing and the Urban Poor; Education, Arts, Culture and Sports Development; Livelihood, Employment and Human Development; Peace and Order and Public Safety; Cleanliness and Environmental Protection; and Transparency, Accountability and Good Governance. Truly, Naga City has evolved into a community that is worth living enjoyable and sustainable. However, the most important element of Naga City is its people. So, the city government exerts extra effort in providing and sustaining programs for the various sectors. Aside from the multi-awarded Naga City People's Council, NCPC, which is the primary venue for participation in governance by the organized sectors, the city maintains development and programs for its urban poor, EWDs, senior citizen, youth and women. These programs, offices and organizations have become institutional expressions of the care and attention provided by the city government to every Nagenyo, Nagenya. Just recently, The Manila Times has chosen Naga as one of the top 10 model livable cities in the country. Naga City beyond being livable is well on its way to being lovable city, inspiringly livable and adorable indeed.
I believe that there's so much to share and learn. And by way of this special sisterhood partnership with our cities, it will not only open doors for opportunities for exchange in governance, commerce, tourism, education, environment, livelihood, youth and sports development, culture and the arts, heritage conservation, social services and citizens empowerment, but also foster the blending of two cultures, a heritage city and a pilgrim city. So on behalf of the city government of Naga, thank you very much to the city government of Vigan headed by Mayor Carlo and Vice Mayor Lourdes Bakiran and the entire officialdom of the city of Vigan for this golden opportunity to be sister with the city of Naga.
Historically, we are twins whose biblical codes can be traced to the papal bull entitled "Super Specula Militante Secrecia", issued by Pope Clement VIII on August 14, 1595, that established the Spanish colonial cities of Nueva Caseres and Nueva Segovia, making our respective territories the first four royal cities in the Philippines that include Manila and Cebu.
Ramil? Ramil? Ya manamane se. Ya pa.
Session is now resumed.
The report of the Committee on Laws, Ordinances, and Reorganization.
Counselor Rayan Rintoy for the report.
Mr. Chairman, may I seek acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Laws and Ordinances?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
There were three items tackled by the committee. First, proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Jose Siraniola and the Honorable City Youth Counselor Odri Gisela A. Iskoto, entitled an ordinance regulating the operation of water systems and quality of water produced and distributed in the city of Naga, creating the Naga City Drinking Water Quality Monitoring Committee, defining its composition and functions, appropriating funds for the purpose, and providing penalties for violations thereof. This matter is considered moot and academic, Mr. Chairman, being approved during the last regular session.
Okay.
Moot and academic.
Noted.
Item number two. The proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Mila S. Rakid Arroyo and City Youth Official Janel J. Paredes, entitled an ordinance further strengthening transparency and people participation in governance in the city of Naga by establishing the process and procedures that shall govern the preparation and approval of the annual budget and other appropriation ordinances of the city government and of the barangays within its territorial jurisdiction to ensure that public expenditure truly responds to the needs and aspirations of the people and for other purposes. May I go directly to the disposition?
Please proceed.
On motion duly seconded, the committee resolved to defer the matter for further study and to wait for the comments and recommendations of the above-mentioned concerned offices and barangays. I understand that the Honorable Miles Rakid Arroyo already submitted before this chamber the modified proposed ordinance, but we have yet to wait for the comments from the mentioned offices, like, for example, the Budget Office, the CPDO, all offices and departments in the city government of Naga, the Naga City People's Council, and the 27 barangays of the city of Naga through the Liga ng mga Barangay. So, I move that we communicate with these offices, Mr. Chairman.
Any second? Are we giving time to the subject offices?
Fifteen days from today.
From receipt?
From receipt.
From receipt. Okay, same is approved.
Item number three. Proposed ordinance authored by Disrepresentation and City Youth Counselor Ian Kenneth T. Badong, entitled an ordinance institutionalizing the Naga City Council for Youth Development, creating the Naga City Youth Development Office, defining the functions thereof and for other purposes. The same is considered moot and academic, Mr. Chairman. The matter was already approved during the last regular session.
Okay.
That ends the report.
Thank you, Counselor Rayan Rintoy. Next item?
The report on the Committee on Transport.
Yes, Counselor Abonel?
The recent report laws mentioned of two items that were moot and academic for having been approved by the Sanggunean in session. Mr. Chairman, may I ask procedurally, could items that are pending with a committee in any of the committees be taken up by the Sanggunean and acted upon?
If there is a motion duly acted upon. I have noted that the report is dated May 29, 2017. Correct me if I am wrong, Counselor Rayan Rintoy, but I am assuming that the legislative measures, the two measures being referred to in the report was acted upon after the conduct of the committee hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah, but could an action be taken even before committee report? In other words, my mind on the matter, Mr. Chairman, is if a matter is referred to a committee, it will be the committee that will report it out and for the proponent to defend it.
That's correct. That's the usual procedure unless a member of this body, in particular of the committee and/or the author of a proposed legislative measure, ask us, makes a motion that a particular matter forming part of the report be taken out and already considered by this body. We have done that already in the past, not just during the last few weeks. Even last year, I could instance recall a motion being made by the Honorable Mila Rakid Arroyo, which we granted. An item in the committee report was taken out upon a motion duly approved. But if there is no such approval, then we cannot do that. We have to await for the report.
Yeah. Let it be known therefore, Mr. Chairman, that any proposal, any measure proposed for that option may not be held for long in a committee, but could actually be taken out and taken by the Sanggunean in session.
In fact, we have also one provision under our rules of procedure giving this presiding officer the authority to move for the inclusion of a particular item pending before the committee if the same is not acted upon within a period of two weeks. Two weeks. Okay. We proceed to the next item.
The report of the Committee on Transport.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. May I request acknowledgement of my report?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The committee hearing was conducted last June 7. In attendance were Counselors Del Castillo, Baldimoro, Sanchez, and also the participants in the meeting. There was a call, Mr. Chair. As for the first item, pending matters for renewal of the removal franchise of the following: Ms. Daisy Angeles, Marasigan, and Roger Pentebelia of Pacol. As for the disposition, with the manifestation and the pending approval of the passage of the proposed ordinance authored by Counselor Mila Rakid Arroyo, on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded by Honorable Baldimoro and Honorable Sanchez Jr., the body resolved to defer the application of the following persons: Ms. Daisy Angeles, Jose Marasigan, and Roger Pentebelia. I sum up, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Without objection, the same is approved.
Second item. The first endorsement dated May 12, 2017, endorsing the new application for removal franchise of the following. May I go directly to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Finding the documents submitted are completed in order, on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded by Honorable Baldimoro and Sanchez Jr., the body resolved to recommend the Sanggunean panel saw the passage of resolutions granting the request for the transfer of the removal franchise of the following persons: One from Vicente Escu, ready to assist to Marvin Pico of Number 50 Abelia, Naga City. I sum up, Mr. Chair.
Second, without objection, same is approved.
Second, from Mila C. Navarosa to Owen Irene Binas of Kiburak Bagumbayanso, Naga City. I sum up, Mr. Chair.
Without objection, the same is approved.
From Sigundino A. Stanislao, sidecar number 1338, and Ed O. Arnante with sidecar 1458 to Ariel and Moral of Kiburak Drive, Bagumbayanso, Naga City. Sum up, Mr. Chair.
Without objection, the same is approved.
Next item. The first endorsement dated May 23, endorsing the new application for removal franchise of the following. May I go directly to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Please proceed.
Finding the documents submitted are completed in order, on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded by Honorable Sanchez Jr., the body resolved to recommend the Sanggunean panel saw for the passage of resolution granting the request for the transfer of the removal franchise of the following persons: From Rafael M. Duque, 0817, and Itrike, 1229, to Irma I. Duque of Corcelter, Carra Ryan, Naga City. Sum up, Mr. Chair.
Without objection, the same is approved.
From Orlando B. Campo, 013, to Nelson S. Salamero of Decca Homes, Abelia, Naga City. Sum up, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Without objection, same is approved.
From Nida C. Ramos, 0370, and Crispin O. Martillano, 1205, to Eduardo O. Santa Rosa of Triangulo, Naga City. Sum up, Mr. Chair.
Same is approved. Yes, Counselor Baldimoro?
Just a clarification, Mr. Chair. On the previous disposition, may I request the secretariat regarding 1229 of Mr. Rapi Duque, Itrike po ba talaga? Si trisikel niya?
Counselor Del Rosario?
Itrike po, sir. Itrike po. Itrike with body number 1229, sir. I think this was discussed during the committee hearing.
First, Mr. Chair, Mr. Rapi Duque is... Previously, he was very vocal on opposing the Itrike. And later on, na konvinsya pero itong... B Mac?
B Mac.
B Mac, Mr. Chair. So, and ang 1229 included jan du man sa first 1,500 franchise. Pwede lang siyang maconvert into Itrike. Kung ita-transfer itong regular franchise to Itrike, mayo po akong nagirunduma na nag-request kayan si Mr. Rapi Duque. Baka po taxikel? Dahil sinaman lang ang may taxikel di di sa Naga.
Is it not that the taxikel or the Itrike is supposed to be registered or the franchise thereof be granted to the co-op to be stolen and not to individual person? This might refer to the Itrike mobile franchise and not Itrike? Counselor Del Castillo?
Mr. Chairman, I believe this one body number 1229 is part of the original 1,500 franchises. And therefore, mayong Itrike du man sa 1,500 na ito because Itrike was only added to the one... I believe that's a typographical error, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Because during the deliberation, they can be aware na yan Itrike. But we are aware that it's a regular franchise.
Okay. Okay, noted? Noted.
Yes, thank you.
Please proceed to the next item.
Next item, Mr. Chair. First endorsement dated June 1, 2017, endorsing the new application for removal franchise of the following. May I go directly to the disposition?
Yes, please.
Finding the documents submitted are completed in order, on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded by Honorable Sanchez Jr., the body resolved to recommend to the Sanggunean for the passage of resolution granting the request for transfer of the removal franchise of the following: Helen M. Agiri to Mel Joseph M. Agiri of Number 35 Sarug Avenue, Tinago, Naga City. Sum up, Mr. Chair.
Without objection, same is approved.
And the second disposition, finding the application for the transfer of the removal franchise was submitted after the deadline set by the ordinance for the granting of the amnesty, which must be on or before June 30, 2016, on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded by Honorable Sanchez Jr., the body resolved to defer the applications of the following: From Ripuyo R. Pilayo to Daisy Angeles, from Henry Escalumac to Salvador Abraham Jr., and Arthur J. Diaz to Michael A. Lara. Sum up, Mr. Chair.
Without objection, the same is approved.
Item number five. Letter dated May 19 of Ms. Lourdes G. Servantes, owner-operator special franchise Violet of Carolina Road, informing that she is tendering his resignation, application for dropping of his franchise and converting the unit to private use. The body resolved to just take note of the letter of the proponent.
Okay, same is noted.
Item number six. Undated letter of Mr. Rodel Tanyagra, barangay Dayangdang, the city, requesting for consideration of his removal franchise, which was already canceled considering that his removal is the only source of income. As for the disposition, Mr. Chair, since the unit is still in the name of the original grantee of the franchise and there was no deed of conveyance in favor of the present owner, and the owner failed to renew it based on the provisions of the ordinance, on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded by Honorable Sanchez Jr., the body resolved to recommend the Sanggunean panel saw to deny the request for reconsideration of Mr. Rodel Tanyagra. I sum up, Mr. Chair.
Without objection, same is approved.
Next item, Mr. Chair. Letters dated May 19 of Mrs. Peck Lidera, owner of three units of removal with sidecar number 0329, 0601 of Felix Plaza Street equal that interior, the city, requesting for reconsideration of SP Resolution Number 2017-223. And another letter, Mr. Chair. Letter dated May 19 of Mr. Eddie Lidera, owner of two units of removal with sidecar number 0350 and 0602, bottom Felix Plaza Street equal that interior, the city, requesting for reconsideration of SP Resolution 2017-223. As for the disposition, Mr. Chair, on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded, the body resolved to deny the request for reconsideration filed by spouses Eddie and Peck Lidera to be able to renew their removal franchise under SP Resolution 2017-223. By the way, Mr. Chair, the spouses are present. They are in the gallery. Considering that based on the findings of the committee, Mr. Chair, they were not able to file on time their request, the committee is constrained to move that we deny their request. I sum up, Mr. Chair.
So, the only basis for the denial is that the request for reconsideration was filed outside the 30-day period? Is that correct?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
When was the 30-day period is supposed to be reckoned?
I don't have the exact records, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Elmer Baldimoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have an information, Mr. Chair, that the letter, the request letter of Mr. and Mrs. Lidera was forwarded to the SP Secretariat beyond 30 days. But the letter, Mr. Chair, was submitted to your office before the 30 days period. So, if the reason, Mr. Chair, if only the reason nakapag-submit in the is beyond the 30 days, I think, Mr. Chair, lao pa within the 30 days kung ikukonser itong letter na pina-receive in your office before it was transmitted to the SP Secretariat.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Baldimoro. Counselor Del Castillo?
Mr. Chairman, first, we pass that resolution which recalls or forfeits the franchise given to some franchise holder... to some franchise holder of removal within the city for not renewing their franchise up to 2014. So that alone is sufficient ground to forfeit the franchise granted to any individual, because it is only a privilege granted by the city. Their failure to renew that franchise within more than three years, Mr. Chairman, I believe should be enough. In fact, kun siguro ka magirunduman, tayo ka kasi reconsiderkan eh. But that was, that reconsideration happened, because the person wrote us immediately after receipt of the notice that their franchise was already forfeited in favor of the city government. Kun ikwakan ng 5 units, du man ta mahalat kapang bainti dia pakarecebi mukhang surat. What's the reason behind? Gusto sabiyo, talaga kun day, kita nakakaktion kan eh, chairman mahirro ng mga taong iniyo, namag iskusarkan, di ka suminig. I think what we did was just proper, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Let me just be clarified about the reason for the denial. Was the denial based on the letter request having been filed beyond the 30-day period? Is that the reason?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We acted, we just acted based on the letter that was forwarded to us by the removal task force, but this representation, Mr. Chair, took note of the, their timely filing of their intent to, to ask for reconsideration. It was only a matter of, uh, yung transmital of the, uh, letter to the committee. That was the basis of the denial, Mr. Chair.
Okay. For the better appreciation of the members of this body, of the facts surrounding the filing, the submission of the letter reconsideration, may I please inform you that in the afternoon of May 19, indeed, our office received a copy of the letter. That was in the afternoon of May 19, and that is well within the 30-day period. Immediately, I, I wrote an instruction to my staff that this be forwarded to the office of the secretary, and the corresponding notation for inclusion in our agenda. But the records of this case would show that my staff transmitted the letter to the office of the secretary on May 26, 2017. May 26 is already beyond the 30-day period, but May 19 is well within the 30-day period. So there lies the issue. Can we, can we consider or can we not consider the filing of the letter before my office as the date which we should, which we should consider in the determination of whether or not the letter was filed within the 30-day period? Councilor Rakid Arroyo?
I believe, Mr. Chair, the filing in the office of the vice mayor can be considered as substantial compliance with the requirement of filing the same with the office of the secretariat. I think what's important to be considered is, the applicant really tried to comply with the deadline, in fact, kam pigi submit niya, dahipangan i-expired si deadline. Only that, dumana niya na-submit sa office of the vice mayor rather than the Sanggunean Panglusod Secretariat, where all documents intended for the Sanggunean should be filed. So I think we should consider it substantial compliance with the requirement of meeting the deadline set by this August chamber. Second, Mr. Chair, I'm even wondering how we communicated that deadlines, that we declared? Paano tapi communicate iyan? Because I'm, ano lang ako, Mr. Chair, worried lang ako na baka si mga iba nakararam, si mga iba dai, dapat may uniform way kita of informing, no? So whether naaraman niya udai, pero nag-ibu kitang paagi to inform everyone in a uniform way, then dahil kitang mababasol. So two things, Mr. Chair, I am supporting that the submission of this particular applicant be considered as having met or being done within the deadline, and therefore, subject for approval thereof. And second, my question on how we made the information as to the deadlines we set known to the public, particularly to the interested parties?
Okay. May we know from the secretary as to how we communicated to the concerned parties our disposition on the matter? Mr. Hill de la Torre?
Your Honors, we sent an individual letter to removal operators with the attached list of operators and removal numbers. We are, through our messenger, Mr. Chair, we are just preparing the summary report on the service of the notice for the information of the body. But the letter is very clear as to the deadline set by the Sanggunean with respect to 2014 below, 2015, and 2016 expiration date.
Okay. Councilor Rakid Arroyo, follow-up?
Yes, follow-up, Mr. Chair. And therefore, Mr. Chair, the reckoning period of the deadline should be the date of receipt of that particular communication. So we really have to look at the record of the Sanggunean as to the date when such communication were received by the respective stakeholders.
That's correct. That should be the case. Councilor Del Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Siguro gerunduma, balikan ta, Mr. Chair, si nangyari. We passed three resolutions. The first resolution is 2017-223, which this body forfeits all franchises granted to individual or individual franchises, because they failed to renew their franchise up to 2014. We do not give time for them to reconsider. But for those franchise holders who failed to renew within calendar year 2015, we gave them 15 days on which to renew their franchise. And for those who failed to renew their franchise within 2016, we gave them 30 days period. So malinaw, Mr. Chair?
And the period will have to be reckoned from the date of receipt?
From the date of receipt.
Okay.
As a member of the committee on transport, Mr. Chair, pikualan me lang ng, kumbaga, para magkaiguan basihan, si itong latest na, dahil nakarinyo 2016 na 30 days, kun tutuusun nga ni, dahil na kita kaipuan magreconsider. But for humanitarian consideration, pikibuhan ta ni, nakika-reconsider kita dahil may poso pa man kita. In this case, ang pig, this representation particularly, Mr. Chair, ang pig basihan ko, si official receipt can removal task force, which is May 26, 2016, in the letter was received April 20, at 12 o'clock noon. That's the timeline. So for me, it's filed out of time.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Del Castillo. Councilor Labadia Jr.?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I would like to support the Honorable Salvador Del Castillo kang sayang statement, pero ang sarong pwede tang ipakiulay sa committee on transport is to reconsider considering, Mr. Chairman, bakuh mangaray na kalaug du man sa 2014.
2016? This is supposed to be renewed 2016?
Pagtutubot ko, Mr. Chairman, 2014 na dahil siya negotiable na dahil nagdecide na kita. At 2015, malinaw na pwede pang 15 to 30 days upon reconsideration, and 2016. So, kun 2014 talaga, Mr. Chairman, dahil na siya pwede.
No, no, no.
So may we know, Mr. Chairman, kung anong status kaini 'yung letter na iin?
My understanding is that the last renewal was in 2013. The franchise is good for three years, so that the renewal will be 2016. And that therefore, based on our decision, the franchises, I mean, the franchise holders are given 30 days, 30 days. Okay. So, can, 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 can we? The secretary? Unless the franchise holders have with them necessary papers to show the last, last renewal?
Mr. Chair, may I move that we dis?
Yes, Councilor Lito?
Mapatara muntapos ito.
Okay.
Si spouses, ano?
Okay. Do we allow the?
Suspense of the rules.
Franchise holders upon motion of Councilor Lito Del Rosario? Yes, Councilor Del Castillo?
Before we allow the franchise, Mr. Chair, we should first, I believe we should first check our record, the official records of this body.
Okay. Okay. The secretary?
We will check the last time that the applicant renewed their franchise.
Although that will take time, if the franchise holders already have copy of the necessary document? The mayor's permit is renewed every year, but the franchise is every three years. So that is what we want to find out, Mr. Secretary, the expiration of the franchise. That's for the mayor's permit. What about the franchise? The expiration of the franchise is what, 20? Are you sure? When was the first time that the franchise was granted? Okay. The last grant of franchise, when was it? Councilor Rakid Arroyo?
Mr. Chair, in the proposed ordinance that was also tackled by the committee, will it be reported also? In that proposed ordinance, Mr. Chair, para ma-settle ta once and for all, itong garo confusion even within the city. Kasi may mga pagkakataon kayo, Mr. Chair, na nag-iissue kitang mayor's permit every year when they renew it, pero si franchise pala n expired na. So garo, ano kita, we're giving, we've given two mixed signals, no, sa satuyang mga franchise holders. Kaya dumana sa proposed ordinance ko, Mr. Chair, sinabi ko, one of the provision is that pwede kitang mag, dumana sa decision tabagang, there should be a resolution for each franchise granted, pwede kitang magtao din ng resolution kun igwa din ng proof that the city has already officially acknowledged the legitimacy of the operation. So gusto sabi ko, may mayor's permit siya, pero mayo siya ka itong resolution, the presence of the mayor's permit would be sufficient proof na nag-ooperate siya legally. Kasi may confusion din kaya, Mr. Chair, talaga, sa implementation ka sa itong ordinance, na nagpaparatao kitang mayor's permit, pero si franchise pala, dahil na renew. So para to settle that, to be fair to everyone, in the proposed ordinance, it is contained there that if the applicant can show official document evidencing the legitimacy of his operation, then that can be enough basis for him to be issued a resolution of grant of franchise. So baka maka-resolve din sa gabustang mga, mga problemang that really was created by the confusing implementation of our ordinance.
So for the meantime, what are you proposing, Councilor Rakid Arroyo?
If the, if the franchise of this particular applicant actually expired on 2013 or 2014, so definitely dahil siya kaibanan dumana sa initial resolution ta na matao kitang 15 days and 30 days, because that covered only franchise expiring on 2015 and 2016. So baka dumana siya ma-cover sa sa itong ordinance ang ito, once it is approved by the Sanggunean. Ikwad dumana proviso.
Sige. For the meantime, Mr. Chair, I move that we defer consideration of this, reconsideration of these letters of the spouses, Lidera.
We defer?
We defer, oh, sige. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, my Miles and the Councilor Del Castillo. Next, next item, Mr. Chair. Letter dated May 26 of Mr. Joiny B Mora, of Barangay Triangulo, operator of three units of removal, the city, expressing that it cannot afford to pay the amount of 1,65,000 for the registration with three units of removal. As to the disposition, the body resolved to defer consideration of the matter.
So this is also deferred?
Next item, Mr. Chair, letter dated May 8 of Mr. Rafael Duque, manager Piston, submitting the documents of their cooperative that will guide and give justification of all removal units currently operated and owned by Piston Cooperative. As to the disposition, Mr. Chair, finding the documents submitted lack the resolution for the units, on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded by Honorable Sanchez Jr., and Ms. Cabantog, the body resolved to defer consideration of the matter.
Okay, this is also deferred?
Item number 11, letter dated May 8, 2017 of Mr. Jesus B Bugate Jr. of Villar Corazón Subdivision, the city, asking for consideration to grant his request to renew his special franchise, number 012 Maroon. As to the disposition, subject to the prompt payment of penalties to the city government on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded by Honorable Sanchez Jr. on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded by Honorable Sanchez Junior and Ms. Cabantog, the body resolved to recommend to the Sanggunean Palos Sol to grant the request of Mr. Jesus B. Bugatti of Villar Corazon, Del Osario, Naga City, to renew his franchise number zero one two, Maroon. I so move, Mrs. Chair.
Any second? Same is approved?
Number twelve, Mrs. Chair, letter dated May twenty-three of Mr. Hernando Isquibel, operations manager, EV Wealth Incorporated, requesting that additional five units be allowed to operate as well in the ninety-day trial run. As to the disposition, Mrs. Chair, the body resolved to Sanggunean Palos Sol to deny the request of Mr. Hernando Isquibel, operations manager of EV Wealth, for additional five units in the ninety-day trial run. I so move, Mrs. Chair.
Any second? Without objection, the same is approved?
Number thirteen, first endorsement dated May nine from the Office of the City Mayor, endorsing the letter dated May five of Policino Superintendent Julius S. Munyes, City Director, requesting for a designated place as impounding area of vehicles apprehended for violating Republic Act four one three six or the Land Transportation and Traffic Code. As to the disposition, Mrs. Chair, on motion of Honorable Del Castillo, jointly seconded, the body resolved to recommend to the Sanggunean Palos Sol to request the PSO to look for possible site to be used as impounding area. And further resolved for the PSO and PNP to coordinate with the Land Transportation Office. I so move, Mrs. Chair.
Without objection, the same is approved?
Item number fourteen, the proposed ordinance sponsored by Honorable Mila Rakeda Royo, co-sponsored by Honorable Janelle J. T. Paredes, entitled "An Ordinance Declaring the Assistance of a Resolution" by the Sanggunean Palos Sol of Naga, granting franchise to operate a public utility tri-mobile within the territorial jurisdiction of the city as the sole and official proof of the grant thereof. Uh, the committee of on transport would like to give way to the Honorable Miles Arroyo to, uh, endorse this for a final approval of the-
Counselor Mila Rakeda Royo, please?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. During the committee hearing of the committee on, uh, transport, uh, there were two identified amendments in that proposed ordinance. If you can just flash, please, the proposed ordinance. Um, mayo siya sa screen. Has it been attached in the committee report? Because it was, uh, transmitted to the Sanggunean, to the Sanggunean Secretariat for attachment in the committee report. Uh, there were two inclusions. Um, mayo siya sa screen tabitin? Sa monitor? Um, can we... Uh, iyo siya. Iyo ba yan si, my amendments?
Mr. Chair? Yes, Counselor Baldimoro?
May I, may I know, Mr. Chair, from the Secretariat? If the last proposed ordinance is the ordinance attached as item three A?
The secretary?
That is the document appearing in the, in the committee report, Mr. Chair. This was received on June third.
Three A? Uh, three A is different?
Uh, Mrs. Chair?
Yes, Counselor?
During the committee hearing, uh, we requested, uh, Counselor Miles to expound on this, uh, proposed, uh, ordinance. And, uh, yeah, proposed ordinance. And, uh, also during the committee hearing, uh, some members of the committee suggested some amendments. And the proponent, Counselor Miles, uh, promised to provide us with the amended, uh, proposed ordinance. And, uh, I think it was already transmitted to the, to the, uh, Secretariat, Mr. Chair.
Yes, uh, that is not, that is not the one, the one that was sent last week? Uh, for inclusion in the committee report?
I can confirm that an email, I receive an email to that-
From Counselor Miles, sir. Copy furnished all the members.
Yes, copy furnished all the members. Do we have it here?
Christine? Ramil, Ramil, si, sir. For the meantime, while we're looking for that revised ordinance, can you proceed to other items of your report?
Uh, uh, the last item, so we defer. Last item, Mrs. Chair, is the proposed ordinance authored by, uh, Silito Del Osario, Kerwin Hidalgo, Honorable Del Castillo, Honorable Alexis Llorente, Honorable Elmerz Baldimoro, Honorable Christopher L. Ken, El Mendoza, Honorable Tomas Ramon E. Sanchez Junior, and Honorable Theris DC Lumeda, entitled the two thousand seventeen Revised Transport and Traffic Management Code of the City of Naga. As to the disposition, Mrs. Chair, the body resolved to recommend to the Sanggunean Palos Sol to request the Secretariat to provide all members of the committee and the Sanggunean Palos Sol of the proposed ordinance. And another, Mr. Chair, that we are requesting for a, uh, special session uh, to tackle, uh, this, uh, this document. This consists of one hundred forty-seven pages amendment to the Traffic Code of Naga City. If the, uh, uh, if this August chamber would, uh, accede to the request for a special session after one hundred fifty-seven days.
Any second? On the recommendation? Same is approved? We go back, we go back to the previous item? So, is, is this already the revised ordinance?
I would just point out, Mr. Chair, that the charge is an outcome of, uh, uh, meeting. Okay, um, section five, Mr. Chair, is a new section. I request that I deliberate seated, because I am reading from the monitor, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
Um, section five is the additional, um, where the resolution of grant of franchise will be issued without cost, okay? For those who already have existing franchise but has no resolution for such, for the grant of such franchise. So they will apply that a resolution be issued to them at no cost, okay? Another, um, additional, Mr. Chair, is section six, which is an inscription, a required inscription in the body of the tri-mobile or E-tri, uh, indicating the franchise granted under Sanggunean Pang lungsod Resolution number, uh, whatever is the number of the resolution granting the franchise. So it will be an inscription in the body of the tri-mobile. Uh, the pertinent provision I was mentioning earlier, Mr. Chair, is found under section four. The qualification for issuance of Sanggunean Pang lungsod Resolution of Grant of Franchise to operate a public utility tri-mobile or E-tri. So in addition to the requirements already imposed by all pertinent ordinances of the City of Naga, a resolution of grant of franchise to operate a public utility tri-mobile or E-tri shall be issued by the Sanggunean Pang lungsod upon presentation of an official document showing that the city government has recognized the legitimacy of the operation thereof by the applicant as of the date or prior to the effectivity of this ordinance. So this seeks to respond to the situation, Mr. Chair, where mayor's permit have been issued uh, for operation of tri-mobils with, um, despite failure to, uh, first renew the franchise, uh, therefore. So to respond to that situation, Mr. Chairman. So that if you have been operating under mayor's permit only, then you can be issued a resolution of grant of franchise if you also complied with the other requirements under the pertinent ordinances of the city.
Okay. Motion?
So may I move for the passage of this ordinance, Mr. Chairman, as presented?
Any second? Without objection? The same is approved? We are approving this on final reading? Okay. In view of the approval of this, uh, we will consider the matter of the, uh, letter of the spouses, uh, Cledera to have been referred back to the committee? Okay?
Uh, those, uh, were deferred by the committee?
Okay.
Mrs. Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor, also Silito Del Osario. Next item?
The report of the committee on games and amusement?
Committee on Games and Amusement?
Request for the acknowledgement of this, uh, report, Mr. Chair?
Your report, Counselor Seranyola, is duly acknowledged.
We have, uh, four items discussed. First one is the letter dated May two, two thousand seventeen of Mr. Roberto Arandia, operator, ANG Grand Carnival, requesting to allow them to put an ANG Grand Carnival with bingo games on the vacant lot near the Sabang High School and the left portion of LCC Mall, Naga, called the STLAT, starting July fifteen to September sixteen. Disposition, this one was deferred pending the submission of, uh, the resolution coming from the, uh, Barangay Sabang and that of the Betel Temple and the Sabang Elementary School.
Okay, so this is deferred?
Number two is the letter dated May twelve, two thousand seventeen of Punong Barangay Jose Mari G. Mercado Caseres Sports Arena, requesting for a permit to hold eight kakulutan on June two, nine, sixteen, twenty-three, and thirty, two thousand seventeen. And three, letter dated May twelve, two thousand seventeen of Punong Barangay Jose Mari Mercado of Caseres Sports Arena, requesting for a permit to hold an eight kakulutan on June three, ten, seventeen, and twenty-four. May I go to disposition?
Yes, please.
Subject to the consideration of the city treasurer, the appropriate amusement tax and observation of the no smoking inside the premises, the body resolved to recommend to the Sanggunean Palos Sol to grant the request of Mr. Jose Mari Mercado for a permit to hold an eight kakulutan on the following dates, June sixteen, seventeen, twenty-three, twenty-four, and thirty, two thousand seven, at the Caseres Sports Arena, Tsampilipin, Naga. And so, I so move, Mr. Chair.
Without objection, same is approved?
The fourth is the letter dated May twelve, two thousand seventeen of Honorable Tomas Ramon E. Sanchez Junior, City Counselor, President, Liga ng Mga Barangay, submitting the dialogue report of the Liga ng Mga Barangay, the representative of PCSO and Event Chance Gaming Corporation, and the official list of registered sales supervisor, sales representative of Event Chance Games in Naga City and Camarini. Disposition, Mr. Chair? On motion of Honorable Abadia Junior, jointly seconded, the body resolved to recommend to Sanggunean Palos Sol to take note of what transpired during the meeting between the PCSO and the Liga held on March twenty-one, two seventeen. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Without objection?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Same is approved? The, this is noted? Thank you, Counselor, also Seranyola. Count, sino na, say na ino? Counselor Abunal? And then Counselor Rakeda Royo, Counselor Del Castillo?
Um, two things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, could we please make sure that the minutes indeed reflect that the disposition for the first item, uh, has been amended, Mr. Chairman? That was deferred, not, uh, approved?
Okay.
'Yung disposition. Number two, the request is for July fifteen to September something. Our ordinance, um, uh, indicates that such activities as vending related to penny franchise is effective July fifteen to October fifteen. That's the date, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, if he's applying for July fifteen, that I think will have to be rejected.
Okay. Counselor Rakeda Royo?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the matter concerning the small-town lottery or STL that's, um, tackled today, uh, does not only need notation from the Sanggunean. Uh, remember, Mr. Chair, that one of the issues concerning the operation of the STL is whether or not, um, they are required to secure mayor's permit or business permit from, uh, the localities where they are operating. Uh, may I know, Mr. Chair, if, uh, STL operation in Naga City has applied for such business permit? If you have information as to on the matter?
Anyone? From the Liga President? Uh, do you have knowledge whether or not Event Chance had applied for mayor's permit?
Uh, Mr. Chair, during the committee hearing, uh, sarapong aneh sa pig, uh, pigto kar duman kung dapat sindang magkuwaning, uh, business permit sa city government. So, ang biga, bigdudula po nindaduman na mas kide po sindang magka- securening business permit dahil, uh, pinagtutugot na po sindang magoperate kang PCSO. But, uh, ang napag, uh, napaguruan po duman, uh, ma-basi lang po sinda duman, ma-kuwan lang sinda dumaning business permit sa city government kung tutugutan po sinda.
Uh, ang gusto sabihon, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, dahil sinda nag-ooperate as of the moment in Naga City?
But, uh, sinasabi po duman, Mr. Chair, ninda na mas kide po sinda, uh, magkuwaning, uh, permit sa city government. Uh, talaga po, uh, pinagtutugutan po sinda kang national na magoperate sa mga, sa mga, uh, LGU po.
Counselor Ranjola?
I have here copy of the letter of the Event Chance Gaming Corporation, addressed to Honorable Mayor J. Bongdat. And may I read it, Mr. Chair? April sixth, two thousand seventeen. Dear Mayor Bongdat, may I respect-
Counselor Ranjola? Can, can you make use of the microphone so that everybody will hear your beautiful voice?
May we respectfully request your good office for the issuance of business mayor's permit for our PCSO STL station, the collection center, which will be situated at zone five, Barangay Balatas, the city municipality. While the Philippine Charity Society office has made it clear to us, PCSO certification attached, that we need not secure any business mayor's permit nor pay any license fees to the LGU. Us being merely unauthorized agent corporation of the PCSO, we deem it proper to apply anyway as a token of our respect and courtesy to your municipality. Please find attached here with the requisite documents pertaining to our application, buried through the years, Carlos I. Garcia, provincial manager. And with that is the certification coming from the Philippine Charity Society office that is, is dated. This is to certify that PCSO Lotto and Lotto Express Kano outlets and small-town lottery authorized agent corporations are exempted from business mayor's permit and/or license free from the local government units concerned pursuant to section four of Republic Act number one one six nine as amended. as amended, otherwise known as PCSO Charter, by a ruling DA, open parenthesis, but, dash zero one five, close parenthesis, 097, dash zero eight, dated July 31, 2008, and Supreme Court Resolution dated July 6, 1998, in GR 133769, affirming the decision of the Court of Appeals in the case of Nikas Yo Haka versus Honorable Loreto de la Victoria, Andres C. Rivas Jr. versus Honorable Alben B. Garcia, dated February 30, 1998, Humberto Vasco versus Philippine Amusement and Gaming Corporation, 197 SCRA 52, and Honorable Jose D. Elina Jr., Sanggunean Panglalawigan of Laguna, versus Honorable Francisco Dizon, Panyo, and Tony Calvento, GR #129093, dated August 30, 2001. This certification is being issued to Event Chance Gaming Corporation, STL Authorized Agent Corporation, for whatever legal purposes it may serve. Issued the second day of March, 2017, Mandaluyong, City Philippines. Alexander Ferrer Balotan, General Manager. That's it.
Okay. Can we be furnished copy of these documents? The secretary will ensure that each member has a copy thereof. Councilor Del Castillo and then Councilor Abonal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, nagluluwas na may request sa City Government of Naga para sa mayor's permit. So, ano na sinaging action, Mr. Chair, and City Government of Naga based on that request?
Does anyone know of the action taken by the executive on this matter was a business or mayor's permit issued on the basis of the application? Anyone?
Anyway, Mr. Chair, since May nakakaramd, siguro ma-respond lang ako duman sa letter gan general manager of PCSO. Unless that new law specifically provides that they na dapat magkuwaning mayor's permit or business permit sa sa room LGU. I believe that based on the spirit of RA 7160, from May, very specific provision on that new law, new charter of the PCSO, still require sindang magkuha talukad.
Okay. So, this will require some study on our part, especially about the citations. I am also interested, Councilor Del Castillo, to read the circular issued by the former DILG secretary. I can still recall that you told us there was such a circular to the effect that STL can be allowed in a particular locality for as long as there is a resolution of no objection from the local body. So, can you tell us the exact number?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will look for that circular issued by the former DILG secretary.
Okay. Thank you. So, for the meantime, yes, Councilor Rakideroya?
I believe, Mr. Chair, we should really look deeply into this matter. In the recent PCL National Executive Officers Meeting, Mr. Chair, one of the president of the PCL Federation President, Provincial Federation President of Aurora, informed me, Mr. Chair, that operators of STL in their area usually would first seek a resolution of no objection from the Sanggunean because it is they said that it is required by the PCSO before the approval is made. So, I don't know why it's not being implemented here. So, I really think we have to look deeply into this so that we will really know how we may be able to regulate this particular activity, which has already been permitted by the national government. I think the local government can do what it can do is really to regulate. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Rakideroya. So, we... Do we have to calendar this for our next regular session? Okay, the secretary is instructed. We proceed to the next item?
The report of the committee on land use.
Who will render the report? Councilor Rakideroya?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I request acknowledgement of the report of the committee on land use for hearing held on June 9, 2017?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
There were seven items acted upon by the committee. First item, letter dated April 12, 2017, of Mr. Ramon Albios, City Assessor, submitting report on the role of the city assessor as defined under ordinance #2006-035 or the idle land ordinance of Naga City. May I move directly to the disposition? On motion, Julie Sekondet, the committee resolved to refer the concern of the city assessor for additional three personnel as augmentation labor force to do the tax mapping project to the Human Resource and Management Office for its appropriate action. The additional personnel, however, need not necessarily be male for as long as qualified and willing to perform according to the job description of the post, such personnel can also be female because the request of the city assessor specifically stated additional three male personnel. So, with the instruction, with the guidance, Mr. Chair, to the HRMO, that the personnel, if it can be granted, if they can be granted, need not be male.
Okay.
May I move as recommended by the committee?
Any second? Without objections, same is approved.
Second disposition, the committee will also review the provisions of ordinance #2006-035 to make the definition or description of idle or vacant land more specific to sufficiently guide the implementing office in the absence of the BLGF guideline on the matter. For this purpose, the city assessor is requested to submit his questions on scenarios encountered on the ground which have made it difficult for them to identify whether the land is idle or vacant or not within 15 days from receipt. So, we move, Mr. Chair.
Any second, without objections, same is approved.
Item number two actually consisted of four other items in the calendar of the committee. Letter dated March 23, 2017, of Attorney Redentio Villar Rivera, submitting comments on the letter dated February 28, 2017, of Mr. Gavino Pilapil to the Sanggunean Panglungsod concerning the St. James Homes or Residences. May I move directly to the disposition?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Ran Yola, Julie Sekondet, the committee resolve as follows. One, to request the city legal officer to inform the Sanggunean on the issue of whether the city government has authority to accept the donation of roads and open spaces containing the common facilities such as the swimming pool in a private subdivision. So, we move, Mr. Chair, 15 days from receipt.
A second, any second? Yes, Councilor Rayan Rintoy?
Just for clarity, Mr. Chairman, at this point in time, there is no acceptance yet on the part of the city government relative to the donation?
Yes, no acceptance.
But, has there been a donation already?
There was a donation, but it has not been accepted.
Thank you.
Okay. So, any second? Same is approved.
Second disposition or recommendation to refer to the HLURB the concern of the homeowners regarding poor maintenance of subdivision, common facilities, and certain violation or alleged violation of minimum standards of development and construction as found by the city engineer and the DPWA. So, we move, Mr. Chairman.
Without objections, same is approved.
Third disposition, to refer to the CPDO the noted violations by the DPWA and the city engineer, and for the CPDO to inform the Sanggunean within 10 days from receipt whether or not such violations were violations of the development permit issued by the Sanggunean. So, we move, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Rayan Rintoy?
I get in the facts and findings that the issue was already raised before the Secretary of the Public Works and Highways relative to certain violations. For example, the building code. And my question, Mr. Chairman, why do we have to wait for the action of the DPWA where in fact these matters are lodged within the jurisdiction of the building official of the city government of Naga, who is the city engineer Palmeana, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, precisely, that's the point. Since it's already with the DPWA, we cannot act on the matter because it's actually within the jurisdiction of the DPWA if the violation pertains to the building code. But, if the violations would pertain to the violations of development permit, then we have to consider the matter. So, we have to be informed whether the alleged violations are violations of development permit or not.
Until when are we going to wait for the response of the DPWA?
We will not wait. We can only remind them to expedite it because they have their own process. But, if the violations are violations of the development permit, then we can act on it immediately. Thank you.
Okay.
Disposition number four, to request the CGDI to furnish the homeowners association a copy of its March 23, 2017 letter to the Sanggunean. So, we move.
Same is approved.
Disposition number five, as to the copy of the city engineer's findings, the homeowners association may just secure the same from the secretariat. There's actually no need for action from the Sanggunean. And last disposition on the matter, the representation of anyone on behalf of the St. James homeowners will no longer be entertained by the Sanggunean Panglungsod until a board resolution from the association stating the authority is submitted to the Sanggunean Panglungsod.
Yes, Councilor Rintoy?
I am just worried about the last recommendation where we are requesting for the board resolution. What if there is no board resolution and yet the matters concerning the issues in the St. James of divisions are found to be meritorious and then we will have no actions for it?
Then, the persons bringing it to the Sanggunean, we will be bringing it in their personal capacity, but not as a representative.
Okay.
So, that's possible, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Without clarification?
Item number three and four tackled together. Letter dated March 8, 2017, of Engineer Emeterio Aman, Chairman of the Board and President, Enjoy Realty Development Corporation, informing that ERDC applied for alteration of plans as early as June 2, 2014, and exerted efforts to rectify its inadvertent violation, but no action has been made by the appropriate department thereon. And together with it is the letter dated March 14, 2017, of Mr. Orlando M. Andres, project supervisor and acting general manager, Kasoreko Tu, relative to the conduct of the comprehensive technical evaluation for possible turnover of electrical distribution facilities of Parkview Executive Townhomes and Parkview Village prior to its acceptance. May I move directly to the disposition, Mr. Chair? Disposition, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunean Panglungsod to deny the application for alteration by the ERDC as recommended by the CPDO due to noncompliance with Section 8D, Article 4, Ordinance #2008-079, which requires the following as one of the requirements to be submitted by the applicant for alteration of plans to it, minutes of the General Assembly of Buyers or Homeowners for purposes of discussing the proposed alteration of plan and the written conformity of the duly organized homeowners association in the absence thereof or in the absence thereof majority of the lot unit or buyers. In the facts and findings, Mr. Chair, it was specifically manifested by Engineer Aman that they are requesting a definitive action by the Sanggunean so that they can take the matter up to the higher authorities such as, for example, the HLURB. So, therefore, with the manifestation of the ERDC that they shall thereafter bring the matter up for consideration of the HLURB, the committee further resolved to direct the secretariat to provide at cost duly certified copies of any document on file with it pertaining to the matter as may be requested by the ERDC. So, the committee, Mr. Chair, resolves that we deny the application for alteration because there is a requirement under our ordinance that could not be complied with. But, of course, matters such as this may be reviewed by the HLURB, but only upon determinative action from the Sanggunean Panglungsod.
Okay.
So, we move, Mr. Chair.
Second, without objection? There is an objection? Yes, Councilor Rayan Rintoy?
Mr. Chairman, is this the same issue that caused confusion to the members of the Sanggunean Panglungsod during the previous sessions?
Yes, it is. So, now it is being decided upon with clarity so that the applicant can, as requested by them...
Is this a motion for reconsideration, Mr. Chairman?
No, it's not. It's being presented as a matter.
Based on the letter coming from Engineer Emeterio Aman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As I understand, this was already resolved by the Sanggunean Panglungsod. Only that, there was confusion as to what was the vote really?
Yes, that's precisely the reason why Engineer Aman wrote a letter because he said that a definitive action from the Sanggunean is needed so that they can bring the matter up to the HLURB.
Now, what was really the vote of the Sanggunean during that session, Mr. Chairman?
Well, Engineer Aman said they did not have proper guidance with that decision, and I think so did this August chamber.
In other words, this will clarify our decision on the matter. And this will, I think, resolve two controversies. Number one, the tendency of the alteration, application for alteration. And number two, the matter brought before the office of the ombudsman.
Yes, because Engineer Aman...
Whatever is the action with respect to this, we will notify both Engineer Aman and the homeowners association insofar as the ombudsman matter is concerned.
Yes, Mr. Chair, because Engineer Aman said that they cannot actually move. They cannot move because there's no definitive action from the Sanggunean.
Okay. So, we go back to the motion. There is an objection interposed by the Honorable Ulian Labadia Jr. If no further discussion is to be had, then those in favor of the motion kindly raise your right hand. The motion is to deny the application for alteration. Kindly raise your right hand.
One, two, three, four, five.
Those...
Six.
Six. Those opposing the motion kindly raise your right hand.
One.
Is there an abstention? Okay.
Three.
By a vote of six in favor of the motion, one against, and three abstention, the motion is considered approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item number five, letter dated May 22, 2017, of Engineer Emeterio Aman, Chairman of the Board and President, Enjoy Realty and Development Corporation, submitting recommendations relative to the public consultation held last May 19, 2017, on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, or CLUP. May I move directly to the disposition?
Please proceed.
On motion, Julie Sekondet, the committee resolved to direct the Sanggunean Panglungsod Secretariat to furnish Mr. Willy Prilias of the suggestions of Engineer Emeterio Aman as contained in his letter dated May 22, 2017, for consideration in the CLUP and in the formulation of the 30-year Sustainable Development Plan wherever such suggestions may be appropriately considered. So, we move, Mr. Chair.
Same is approved. Is that an objection? Okay, same. Councilor Del Castillo?
This has reference to the vote previously cast by the members because I noticed that we are 11 in the whole, Mr. Chair. But, the vote is six, one, three.
Total of... Total of 10?
Yes, but we are 11, Mr. Chair.
The last should be considered as abstention. May we... May I know from the secretary who voted in favor of the motion? Who are the six? Who are the six?
Honorable... Honorable Abunal, Honorable Diasis, Honorable Ranhola, Honorable Yel Castillo,
Arroyo, Raquel Arroyo-
And Honorable Arroyo.
And Honorable Sanchez, Sanchez Jr. Okay. Counselor Labadia objected to the motion and therefore all the rest abstained. To include Counselor Baldimoro, Counselor Vidal Castillo, Counselor Rayan Rintoy, and Counselor Joselito De Rosario. Okay. So actually, the vote is six, six in favor of the motion, one against, and four abstention, as corrected. Thank you. Please proceed, Counselor Raquel Arroyo.
Talaga account pa. Sige bilang. Item number six: Letter dated May 6, 2017 of Mr. Arnold Redota, President Ramida Village Homeowners Association, seeking assistance relative to the turnover of Ramida Village open spaces to the, to the city for city administration. Disposition: On motion duly seconded, the committee resolved to refer the matter to the city mayor for possible representations with the surviving heirs of Ida Felipe for purposes of finally effecting the formal transfer of the donated roads and open spaces at the Ramida Village to the city of Naga. So we move, Mr. Chairman.
Without objection?
Seven.
That is not an objection, Counselor? Okay, please proceed, Counselor Del Castillo.
I believe, Mr. Chair, that before any road is accepted by the city government of Naga, there should be an inspection to be made by the city engineer's office to determine whether the road is in good condition so that the city will not spend for its maintenance in the short term. So can we include, or yeah, a directive to the city engineer to conduct an inspection of the subject road, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Del Castillo.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Counselor Baldimoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We must be understand that the Ramida Village was previously turnover at the time of Mayor Robredo. Mayu lang pong acceptance. So if the city engineer will inspect today the, the road, mga damage na po ito. So I think we, we consider that na haluin na pong big turnover, kaya lang dahil lang po naaccept. So I think, pwede man ipa-inspect, but we, we should understand na dahil sa haluin ng panahon na big, big submit for turnover, dahil lang naaccept, maintindihan na mga damage road na ang, ang Ramida Village. Iyung ano po 'yan ang reason why the city government could not implement a project at Ramida Village dahil they turn, they accepted itong turnover. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I think right now, we are more after the open spaces in the subdivision because of the plan to construct a, an educator center thereat, which we cannot do in the absence of a donation. Okay, so we are approving the recommendation of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Seventh and last item: Letter dated May 29, 2017 of Mr. Wilfredo Priles Jr., City Planning and Development Officer, submitting the technical evaluation of the document submitted by Mrs. Mari Lupanganiban relative to her application for preliminary approval for locational clearance of proposed Villia El Nido subdivision located at Zone 6, Sitio Bagong Sirang, San Felipe de City. May I go directly to the disposition?
Please do.
On motion duly seconded, the committee resolved to suspend consideration of the matter until the revised development plan is submitted by the applicant. The applicant committed to submit a revised development plan, Mr. Chair. So we move to defer.
This item is deferred.
Second disposition: The HSDO is likewise requested to issue within five days from receipt a certification on whether or not the project applied for is under the Kanta Baysa Kauswagan program. So we move, Mr. Chair.
Same is approved. Thank you, Counselor Miller Raquel Arroyo. Do you want to take a break? Okay, you take a break?
nagas aggressive growth investment platform has yielded positive results. In 2014 BLGF certified that Naga has developed a strong local revenue base from real property and business taxes because of its robust economy controlling a forty-four percent share in the total revenues of all seven cities in the Bicol region. A feat that remains unparalleled to date. To Capitol, Mayor Bongat himself received in 2016 the prestigious CEO Excellent Award given by the International Association of Business Communicators Philippines for its exemplary leadership in the field of public service. Mayor Bongat with his game-changing leadership braced by solid foundation of good governance is expected to continue leading his beloved city to greater heights. Competitiveness and livability has been the city government's focus since Mayor Bongat assumed office in July 2010. The efforts can be summed up in our Help Your City Agenda which stands for help, health, housing and the urban poor, education, arts, culture and sports development, livelihood, employment and human development, peace and order and public safety, cleanliness and environmental protection and transparency, accountability and good governance. Truly, Naga City has evolved into a community that is worth living, enjoyable and sustainable. However, the most important element of Naga City is its people. So, the city government exerts extra effort in providing and sustaining programs for the various sectors. Aside from the multi-awarded Naga City People's Council NCPC which is the primary venue for participation in governance by the organized sectors, the city maintains development and programs for its urban poor, BWDs, senior citizen, youth and women. These programs, offices and organizations have become institutional expressions of the care and attention provided by the city government to every Nagenyo, Nagenya. Just recently, The Manila Times has chosen Naga as one of the top ten model livable cities in the country. Naga City beyond being livable is well on its way to being lovable city inspiringly livable and adorable indeed.
I believe that there's so much to share and learn and by way of this special sisterhood partnership with our cities, it will not only open doors for opportunity, opportunities for exchange in governance, commerce, tourism, education, environment, livelihood, youth and sports development, culture and the arts, heritage conservation, social services and citizens empowerment, but also foster the blending of two cultures, a heritage city and a pilgrim city. So on behalf of the city government of Naga, thank you very much to the city government of Vigan headed by Mayor Carlo and Vice Mayor Lourdes Bakiran and the entire officialdom of the city of Vigan for this golden opportunity to be sister with the city of Naga.
Historically, we are twins whose umbilical cords can be traced to the papal bull entitled Super Specula Militante Seglesia issued by Pope Clement VIII on August 14, 1595 that established the Spanish colonial cities of Nueva Caseres and Nueva Segovia making our respective territories the first four royal cities in the Philippines that include Manila and Cebu.
I've heard from a friend today and she said you were in town. Suddenly the memories came back to me in my mind. How can I be strong? I've asked myself time and time I've said that I'll never fall in love with you again. A wounded heart you gave, my soul you took away. Good intentions you had made me, I know you did. I come from a place that hurts and God knows how I cried. And I never want to return, never fall again. Making love to you, my thoughts are going, oh so right. How can I be strong? I've asked myself time and time I've said that I'll never fall in love with you again. So here we are alone again, didn't think it'd come to this. And to know it all began with just a little kiss. I've come too close to happiness, they have swept away. Don't think I can take the pain, never fall again. You're the card that made in the kingdom, my heart is in your hands. Don't you stand there and then tell me you love me to live again. Cause I'm falling in love with you again. Hold me, hold me. Don't ever let me go. Say it just one time, say you love me. God knows I do love you again. Anong ka ba? Paano mo kaya ako mapapansin? Malaman mo kaya ang aking damdamin? Ano ang dapat sabihin ng puso ko may pagtingin? Sa araw-araw ay nagtataka, ang puso ko'y ito o bakit ba? Ang kilos ko'y nababago na halos na andyan ka na. Di makatulog sa gabi sa kaiisip, sa diwa ko'y ikaw ang aking panaginip. O bakit ba ikaw ang siyang laging laman? Nag-isip ko. Sa bawat sandali ay nais kang makita, kapag tumitig na sa akin ay nikaya. Anong hiwaga ang nadarama? Anong ka ba? Sa araw-araw ay nagtataka, ang puso ko'y ito o bakit ba? Ang kilos ko'y nababago na halos na andyan ka na. Di makatulog sa gabi sa kaiisip, sa diwa ko'y ikaw ang aking panaginip. O bakit ba ikaw ang siyang laging laman? Nag-isip ko. Sa bawat sandali ay nais kang makita, kapag tumitig na sa akin ay nikaya. Anong hiwaga ang nadarama? Anong ka ba? Oh di makatulog sa gabi sa kaiisip, sa diwa ko'y ikaw ang aking panaginip. O bakit ba ikaw ang siyang laging laman? Nag-isip ko. Sa bawat sandali ay nais kang makita, kapag tumitig na ay nikaya. Anong hiwaga ang nadarama? Anong ka ba? Di makatulog sa gabi. Sa diwa ko, sa isip ko. Sa bawat sandali ay nais kang makita, kapag tumitig na sa akin ay nikaya. Anong hiwaga ang nadarama? Anong ka ba? Oh di makatulog sa gabi sa kaiisip, sa diwa ko'y ikaw ang aking panaginip. O bakit ba ikaw ang siyang laging laman? Nag-isip ko. Kapag ako ay nagmahal. Isang lamang at wala nang iba pa. Iya alay kukuha. Lumikaya ka lang, lahat ay gagawin. Tumingin ka man sa iba. Magwawalan ang kibo na lang itong puso ko. Walang sumbat na marilinig. Patak ng luha ko ang niwang saksi. Bakit nabamahal kita? Kahit di pinapansin ang damdamin ko, di mo man ako mahal. Ito pa rin ako nagmamahal lang dapat sa'yo. Bakit nabamahal kita? Kahit na may mahal ka mag-iba. Pagbalik na balik ako sa'yo hanggang kayang ako matitig. O bakit na ba mahal kita? Ano man ang sabihin nila? Patitingin ko sa'yo'y di kayi man magmamati. Mukuhay paghihingan kita. Di naghahangad ng ano mang kapali. Tumingin ka man sa iba. Magwawalan ang kibo na lang itong puso ko. Walang sumbat na marilinig. Patak ng luha ko ang niwang saksi. Bakit nabamahal kita? Kahit di pinapansin ang damdamin ko, di mo man ako mahal. Ito pa rin ako nagmamahal lang dapat sa'yo. Bakit nabamahal kita? Kahit na may mahal ka mag-iba. Pagbalik na balik ako sa'yo hanggang kayang ako matitig. So bakit na ba mahal kita? Bakit nabamahal kita? Kahit di pinapansin ang damdamin ko, di mo man ako mahal. Ito pa rin ako nagmamahal lang dapat sa'yo. Bakit nabamahal kita? Kahit na may mahal ka mag-iba. Pagbalik na balik ako sa'yo hanggang kayang ako matitig. So bakit na ba mahal kita? O bakit na ba mahal kita?
We are here, we are proud. We want the world to come to us and be a part of our hopes, of our dreams, of our new beginning, we will make a different star. We will now open up our door, a city like you've never seen before. Come feel the vibrates, come hear us shout. Experience magic, come to the sound. With one thought, city we love on you. What you've been looking for, we have it too. With our commitment, we want you to know that we are here and we're about to show that Naga smiles to the world.
Naga smiles.
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 Naga smiles to the world.
Naga City in the Bicol Region has been known for its evolving unique governance paradigms and local governance programs. In fact, it has been recognized by various national and international institutions receiving numerous awards for these achievements. The city leadership with the people's art and support continues to inspire creativity, participation and productivity. Like his predecessor, the late DILG secretary Jesse M. Robredo, incumbent mayor John G. Bongat continues to bring honor to the city, the latest of which, among others, is Naga's being a judge for two consecutive years, 2015 to 2016, as the country's overall number one most competitive component city. Naga was likewise chosen in 2013 and 2016 as one of the top next wave cities of the Philippines. Also in 2014, the Lee Kwanu Institute of Public Policy of the National University of Singapore recognized Naga's ICT-driven project entitled Using ICT for Civic Engagement Towards Responsive Decision Making as the most inspiring innovation in e-government and participatory innovations in Asia. Mayor Bongat's aggressive growth investment platform has yielded positive results. In 2014 BLGF certified that Naga has developed a strong local revenue base from real property and business taxes because of its robust economy controlling a forty-four percent share in the total revenues of all seven cities in the Bicol region. A feat that remains unparalleled to date. To Capitol, Mayor Bongat himself received in 2016 the prestigious CEO Excellent Award given by the International Association of Business Communicators Philippines for its exemplary leadership in the field of public service. Mayor Bongat with his game-changing leadership braced by solid foundation of good governance is expected to continue leading his beloved city to greater heights. Competitiveness and livability has been the city government's focus since Mayor Bongat assumed office in July 2010. The efforts can be summed up in our Help Your City Agenda which stands for help, health, housing and the urban poor, education, arts, culture and sports development, livelihood, employment and human development, peace and order and public safety, cleanliness and environmental protection and transparency, accountability and good governance. Truly, Naga City has evolved into a community that is worth living, enjoyable and sustainable. However, the most important element of Naga City is its people. So, the city government exerts extra effort in providing and sustaining programs for the various sectors. Aside from the multi-awarded Naga City People's Council NCPC which is the primary venue for participation in governance by the organized sectors, the city maintains development and programs for its urban poor, BWDs, senior citizen, youth and women. These programs, offices and organizations have become institutional expressions of the care and attention provided by the city government to every Nagenyo, Nagenya. Just recently, The Manila Times has chosen Naga as one of the top ten model livable cities in the country. Naga City beyond being livable is well on its way to being lovable city inspiringly livable and adorable indeed. Inspiringly livable, and adorable indeed.
I believe the open doors for opportunities For exchange in governance, commerce, tourism, education, environment, livelihood, youth, and sports development, culture and the arts, heritage conservation, social services, and citizens empowerment, But also foster the blending of two cultures, A heritage city and a pilgrim city.
So on behalf of the city government of Naga, Thank you very much to the city government of Vigan Headed by Mayor Carlo and Vice Mayor Lourdes Bakiran And the entire officialdom of the city of Vigan For this golden opportunity To be sister with the city of Naga.
Historically, we are twins. Those umbilical cords can be traced To the papal bull entitled Superspectula Militante Secrecia Issued by Pope Clement VIII on August 14, 1595, That established the Spanish colonial cities Of Nueva Caseres and Nueva Segovia, Making our respective territories The first-four royal cities in the Philippines That include Manila and Cebu.
Naga City in the Bicol Region Has been known for its evolving unique governance paradigms And local governance programs. In fact, it has been recognized By various national and international institutions Receiving numerous awards for these achievements. The city leadership with the people's art and support Continues to inspire creativity, participation, and productivity. Like his predecessor, the late DILG secretary Jesse M. Robredo, Incumbent Mayor John G. Bongat continues to bring honor to the city. The latest of which, among others, Is Naga's being a judge for two consecutive years, 2015 to 2016, As the country's overall number-one most competitive component city. Naga was likewise chosen in 2013 and 2016 As one of the top next-wave cities of the Philippines. Also in 2014, the Lee Kwan Yew Institute of Public Policy Of the National University of Singapore Recognized Naga's ICT-driven project Entitled "Using ICT for Civic Engagement Towards Responsive Decision-Making" As the most inspiring innovation in e-government And participatory innovations in Asia. Mayor Bongat's aggressive pro-investment platform Has yielded positive results. In 2014, BLGF certified That Naga has developed a strong local revenue base From real property and business taxes Because of its robust economy Controlling a 44% share In the total revenues of all seven cities in the Bicol Region. A feat that remains unparalleled to date. To Capitol, Mayor Bongat himself received in 2016 The prestigious CEO Excellent Award Given by the International Association of Business Communicators Philippines For its exemplary leadership in the field of public service. Mayor Bongat, with his game-changing leadership Braced by solid foundation of good governance Is expected to continue leading his beloved city to greater heights. Competitiveness and livability Has been the city government's focus Since Mayor Bongat assumed office in July 2010. The efforts can be summed up In our Help Your City Agenda, Which stands for HELP, HEALTH, HOUSING, AND THE ORBAN POOR, EDUCATION, ARTS, CULTURE, AND SPORTS DEVELOPMENT, LIVELIHOOD, EMPLOYMENT, AND HUMAN DEVELOPMENT, PEACE AND ORDER, AND PUBLIC SAFETY, CLEANLINESS, AND ENVIRONMENTAL PROTECTION, AND TRANSPARENCY, ACCOUNTABILITY, AND GOOD GOVERNANCE. Truly, Naga City has evolved into a community That is worth living, enjoyable, and sustainable. However, the most important element-
We are now in item number-
Number seven, number seven, Mr. Chairman.
Number seven, okay.
The proposed resolution of the Honorable Lulansilabadiya Jr. Requesting the Honorable City Mayor To conduct an exploratory talk With the Austria family relative to the possible acquisition Of the 100 hectare property in barangay Carolina For socialized housing project of the city government. And also the letter dated May 8, Mr. Alex Hanyo, real estate broker Regarding the subject property And the privileged speech of the Honorable Lulansilabadiya Jr. On this matter.
Counselor Julian Labadia Jr., Mr. Chairman, before the discussion, May I have the floor, may I request Tin Tin to please Ipaki-plasmo itong Isarog Hills, Itong Isarog Hills muna, Itong drawing niya, yan. Ini 'yung Mr. Chairman, the honorable members Of the Sanggulian Panglunsod. Yun is 'yung plano kato kang field state Na gibuhan duman sa lugar na ito. Before na-conceptualize yan, In approve yan kang Sanggulian Panglunsod Na re-classify siya, And then na-approved kang da na i-convert into residential. And sa panahon mo ito na Counselor Raniola Na na-approved 'yang particular na lupa na yan, And actually, 'yan subdivision is was already approved. And then dahilang nagkadaragos, Mr. Chairman. Si ang aram ko si Palk NDP kang Isarog Hills was already approved. So yan, next slide, Mr. Tin. Yun po 'yan si pinaka plano plano Linda. Next slide please. And then katong panahon po, Ang presyo niya na kang Lotte Is nag-aabot na sa, pakisakat-sakat ito, 1,000 pesos per square meters, 'yan Isarog Hills. And may mga area duman sa Carolina Road na 1,5, 1,5, 2,000, Interior lattice 500. So yun po 'yan si mga presyo. Until now, the price is 1,000 pesos. So, next slide Tin. Sige pa, itong sa balion na itong yan. Ini 'yung po si Kamarinisur Map indicating the area. Next slide Tin. Yun na ni si Naga, and then Uto si Red Dat na pwedeng buktakan katong, Ay, si location kang 100 square meters. And then itong next slide Tin. Ay, yun na po 'yan si pinaka Sa area niya duman sa crossing kang Carolina. Next slide Tin. Yun po 'yan si mga, kung isasadit muna. Iba pang sarong slide Tin. Okay, yun po niyang situation mo niyan duman, Kung ihilinguntas siya. So, ayun eh. Yun, item. So, Mr. Chairman, Itong resolution na pigpapa-request kong Magkaigwan ng exploratory talk lang, Mr. Chairman, Or pag-ulayan lang baga, Ni kang may sadiri sa kanin Mayor, whether madagus siya o day, Ang gusto tama lang garo pigirequesta sa iya Magkaigwang exploratory to, Na magkaulay, na kung habo di mamang kita magiginibo, Pero kung gusto, nakulao na bagay, Mr. Chairman, Considering na si sinasabi tapuon kang pagkampanya Ta na one-time big-time housing for all Nagenios, Mal-ma-ma-masisimbagan tabu dig di 'yung, Mr. Chairman. Kung ano man ang plano ta, From 1,000 pesos, Pigtao ko po sa indos 'yung mga details katto, May mga agreement na garo nagbaba na sa presyo up to 350. So 350, 1,0350, Ano siya, ano pagiyan, converted gabus, Halos kompleto na, maluwas, Mr. Chairman, Very, very cheap baratuho na maray ini 'yung lagang ini. So, ini 'yung, Mr. Chairman, resolution na hinahagan paaprobahan, Is just a matter of exploratory to. Kung mangyari o day, At least nagtry kita na mapuunan ng tampag urulayan, Mr. Chairman. So with this, Mr. Chairman, I would like to request all members of the councils To have a join in collective motion, Mr. Chairman, That we approve the resolution, Mr. Chairman.
Any comment from the members of this body? By the way, for the information, for your information, Insofar as item 7A is concerned, You will please take note that the letter Of Engineer Alex Henyo Was addressed to this representation. Immediately upon receipt of the letter, I wrote a letter reply to Engineer Alex Henyo Advising him that the letter should be addressed to Mayor John Bongat. Okay, anyone? Counselor Greg Abunal?
Mr. Chairman, just two questions. First, what- Location of this particular proposed site Relative to the other Austria property Na pigi-interesan nga ni ikang Carolina National High School part of it. Secondly, ito po bang Austrian ito relative Or is the same as the Austrias na pigbakalan takat to Lotte Franting Carolina National High School?
Okay, Counselor Labadia Jr., Would you like to answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, ang Ang naaprobahan, Mr. Chairman, garo more or less is 108 hectares Katong ipakumbert ninda yan. Si urulay, Mr. Chairman, Naga City Government, Katong panahon ni Sek Jesse, the Mayor Jesse Sobredo Den, Ang 15 hectare ipapabakal sa city katong panahon sa 200 pesos per square. Si 15ing hectare, ang nabayadan lang, Mr. Chairman, si 10 hectares. Si 5 hectares na ipabayad. Kaya itong 15ing hectare, Si sampulok bayad, si 5 hectares na ipa. And hopefully, dayta'to pwede bayadan 350, Kung babayadan ta ito sa 200. Pero the rest, the rest of the not owned by the Austria Is now being sold at 350 pesos per square meters.
Any other comment? If none, yes, Counselor Abunal?
My question was, 'yung relative position, Ang pakaram ko kay, Mr. Chairman, 'yung sa, 'yung nainut na supposedly 15 pero 10 lang Was closer to 'yung Carolina National High School.
National High School.
Parang across the road. Ini 'yung available na 92 hectares or so. San siya? Going down, right side, left side, whatever. Importante din yun. Secondly, Ito po bang mga Austriang ito, the same Austrias Or different from 'yung katransak na earlier?
Okay, okay, Counselor Labadia?
Mr. Chairman, the same po. Kung iyan baga, Mr. Chairman, crossing ta sa Carolina, Pag nag, ang atubangan po katong Carolina National High School or elementary, Ah, yun, National High School. National High School. Yun po, yun po. Yun po.
So the 15, the 15 hectares is not included in the 91? Okay. The 91 is just beside the 15 hectares. Okay.
So may I invite, Mr. Chairman, On joining collective motion of all the members To have an exploratory, Mr. Chairman, Magkaurulay lang, Mr. Chairman. So I move, Mr. Chairman, on joining collective.
Any second? Without objection, same is approved. Yes, Counselor Del Rosario?
Mr. Chair, I have a differing opinion On the concept of putting there A one-time big-time urban world. I'll explain that thoroughly in the succeeding sessions, Mr. Chair.
Your, your position is, come again?
I have a different opinion as far as putting there on a one-time big time, uh, project.
So, does that mean that you are objecting to the motion?
Uh, for the moment, uh, Mr. Uh...
Okay, Councilor Greg Abonal?
I can almost get the wind na, we, we should not put in one basket all the eggs, na idea. In other words, we cannot have too big a housing project for, for this purpose. But what we are saying, Mr. Chairman, is na tugutan na pag-urulayan. Ako ay am hoping na makakabali sa pag-urulay na makuha na ng ganitong 15 hectares. Baka makabali na today, napapasil. Uh, we can now tell Mrs. Dimakulangan na, uh, pwede na itaw sa iya. I'm hoping na sa exploratory talks, makabali ito sa urulay. Uh, even then, sa exploratory talk, day mangkaipuhan na ubos kun ubos. Baka ngayon 50 hectares na naman nababakalun, no? It's, it's exploratory.
Okay.
Ang number 3, sabi ni Doctor Raniola, besa na nga, pagabot kang panahon ta.
So, there being no objection, the motion is approved. Okay. Incidentally, incidentally, insofar as the 15 hectares is concerned, if you will recall, the transaction transpired in 2009. Indeed, the subject area is 15 hectares at the supposed purchase price of 200 pesos per square meter. We have, uh, paid 20 million pesos. We are still supposed to pay 10 million pesos, but on condition that the sellers are going to shoulder the, uh, payment for capital gains tax. It is for this reason that the transaction is no longer moving because apparently, if the sellers are going to comply with their undertaking in the deed of conditional sale, they're no longer going to receive any amount, or if, uh, there are still remaining amount, that's considerably, what, only about 1 million pesos? Because the rest will have to be paid for, um, government taxes and fees. But I think the sellers have the obligation to comply with their obligation under the contract. So, I, I, I hope that somebody from us will later on take, uh, initiative of, uh, towards that direction of us finally owning the entire, uh, property. Councilor Salvador Del Castillo?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, um, came back to my memory, uh, what happened, um, when that 15 hectare supposedly purchased by the city. So, um, I believe that, uh, before any negotiation uh, for the, uh, in connection with this proposal, Mr. Chairman, that 15 hectare that is supposedly, uh, purchased by the city, wherein only, uh, um, there is a balance of around 10 million pesos and, uh, the, the Austria family had the chip, um, comply with their obligation to the city. Should that, should be, um, should go hand in hand if there will really be a negotiation for this particular purpose. Because, uh, um, we must remember that the city had already paid 20 million pesos for that supposedly 15 hectare property. But, um, and up to now, the title to that property is not yet transferred or conveyed to the city government of Naga. So, it should not go independently with this proposal, Mr. Chairman. But I suggest that it should go hand in hand with this proposal.
Thank you, Councilor Del Castillo. Next item?
The endorsement dated June 15, 2017 from the Office of the City Mayor endorsing the joint venture agreement made and entered into by, between the city and the Cambridge Investment Incorporated for ratification.
Thank you, Councilor Rakideroya. The agreement is duly authorized on June 15, 2017.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. We've authorized the city mayor to enter into this memorandum of agreement in compliance with the requirement of the city under the 20% balanced housing, um, requirement under the Urban Development and Housing Act. Uh, the city mayor has signed the agreement and the document has been authorized. So, if there are no questions, may I move for the ratification of this memorandum of agreement?
Any second? Without objection, the same is approved.
In relation there to Mr. Chair, may I also move that we grant the development permit applied for by, uh, Cambridge, by the subject entity party in that agreement? Because in the committee hearing conducted by the committee and a report has been rendered to the Sanggunean, the only missing requirement is the compliance for the 20% balanced housing.
Without objection, same is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Rakideroya. Councilor Entoy?
To which entity are we entering agreement with? Cambridge or CGDI? Because the letter that is, that is requesting is the CGDI, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, the party is actually Cambridge. Uh, CGDI is an authorized representative. But the party is, the applicant actually is Cambridge.
But insofar as the development permit is concerned,
Cambridge.
The same is, uh, to be issued with Cambridge?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Next item?
The letter dated April 25, 2017 from Engineer Rolicampelios with respect to the request for a resolution authorizing the city mayor to negotiate with Mr. Cesar Perez, Cirilo Regalado, Victor Perez, Oscar Perez, and Madame Esther Perez with respect to their properties in Concepcion, Piquenya.
Councilor Rakideroya?
Um, considering, Mr. Chair, that the proposed property is, um, intended for resettlement of, um, affected families, particularly coming from, uh, those, um, from Triangulo area.
Triangulo.
Yes, Mr. Chair. May I move that we authorize the city mayor to negotiate for the acquisition of the property subject of the communication?
Any second?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Del Castillo?
Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman. Since we are authorizing the mayor, uh, how much the value of the property per square meter? In what, where's the location of the property, Mr. Chairman?
Councilor Rakideroya?
Um, I believe it's contained in the communication, Mr. Chair. Um...
It's in Concepcion, Piquenya, beside the St. Clair subdivision?
Yes.
Which is another housing site of the city?
Yes, it will, it is adjacent and therefore may be connected to our existing resettlement project or review.
Um, how much is the, uh, value of the property, uh, supposedly, uh, to be acquired by the city, Mr. Chairman?
Um, I believe, Mr. Chair, that will be part of, um, the first steps that the city mayor will undertake to request, um, an appraisal of the property from the appraisal committee. And, um, therefore, we are, um, basing the authority on the offer so that, um, the ci, the city mayor may negotiate, um, their own.
Can, can we task the appraisal committee to conduct an appraisal of the subject property? And for it to furnish the city mayor a copy thereof, as well as this body?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, but since this is still the negotiation stage, I really believe that, uh, it's better that the appraisal be still an internal information so that the city mayor will have, uh, um, leeway in negotiating. Because if, for example, the other party already knows uh, the maximum in our appraisal, then, uh, there may be very little negotiation.
Yes.
Negotiating room.
I am of the same belief that, uh, all, uh, informations associated this should only be contained and should not be divulged to the other party. But there should be some basis, uh, by which the city mayor could, uh, start with in negotiating with the other party. And that should be the, uh, appraisal of the committee?
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, but if we will be officially furnished, then therefore it will form part of the records of the Sanggunean and open to the public. I think until after the negotiation has, uh, failed or succeeded, then that's the time I think that, uh, we should have that information available. Otherwise, it might, um, prejudice the negotiation. I think that, in fact, that's what I observe, Mr. Chair. Um, we usually have the appraisal when the, the city mayor negotiates with the landowner. So, rather than, uh, the, the mayor being able to negotiate for lower price, if the landowner is already looking at the maximum as contained in the appraisal, then there will be very little, uh, room for negotiation anymore.
If we consider the appraisal of the committee as internal only to us, then even if it already forms part of the records of the Sanggunean or that of the mayor's office, nobody should, uh, be given any authority to furnish the other party a copy thereof, nor that other party, even if he requests copy of the appraisal from us, he should not be furnished, uh, copy thereof. But...
When we are furnished copy, Mr. Chair, it, um, goes into the agenda of the Sanggunean.
Okay. Councilor Labadia Jr. and then Councilor Del Castillo?
Though I seconded the motion of the Honorable Miles. Nahiling ko, Mr. Chairman, na kaipuhan takutahan na ulay ko yao na dyan nakakaag. Usually nakakaag na dyan si more or less na presyo. Ta kung ako, Mr. Chairman, ako ang pagtubod ko, siring man dyan sa nagpapabakal. Sinda mahapot na sinda sa BIR, mahapot na sinda sa baba, kung guraano more or less ang presyo dyan. Day man yan, for public man yan, Mr. Chairman. Day man yan naitatago sa maisaliri sa kasasatuya. So, kaipuhan lang siguro na maaraman ta sa assessor's office na sisipresyonin na duman. Ta considering na agricultural, agricultural la, land pa itong, Mr. Chairman, this early maaraman talang more or less kung ano ang presyo sa particular na area, especially if it is agricultural land, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Labadia. Councilor Del Castillo?
Uh, Mr. Chair, actually, um, I believe na, dahipanganik kaipuhan na the appraisal committee itself and magapraise. But for purposes of negotiation, I believe that the mayor should have a ballpark figure on, uh, to begin with, uh, the negotiation with the, the other party. So, maski, uh, your appraisal can city assessor's office because, uh, there was, uh, one time na, yun, si Pigamita, even for, um, um, the exercise of the power of eminent domain. So, I believe appraisal of the city assessor is necessary para ma-determine how much really is the price of that agricultural land to be acquired by the city.
Okay. Thank you. At any rate, for whatever it may be worth, let me tell you my experience when I was the city legal officer and was always being asked by then, uh, City Mayor Jess Robredo to prepare an offer to buy, uh, addressed to a particular landowner. I have always noticed that there is already that copy of the appraisal, uh, report coming from the appraisal committee. But, uh, uh, with, with the mi, with the minimum amount and the maximum amount. But then, during the time, it was always the policy, number one, to keep the document to ourselves. Number two, to offer the minimum amount. So, that had been the case then. Okay. So, uh, in, inasmuch as there is no objection to the motion, the same is approved. As to the, uh, need for the appraisal, there being no motion, none will be acted upon. Councilor Del Castillo?
Uh, that's why I raised that issue, Mr. Chair.
So, you are moving?
Yes, that, uh, there should really be a benchmark figure for the city to begin with, uh, the negotiation with the other.
So, the motion, please?
So, I move, Mr. Chair, that we, uh, direct the city assessor's office to conduct an appraisal of the subject property.
Without objection, the same is approved. Next item?
Letter dated May 29, 2017 of Ms. Maylin Kapungkol, Director Electric Power Industry Management Bureau, DOE, with respect to the draft joint regulation mandated under DOE circular in relation to the solution number 2017, that's 234 of the Sanggunean on the possible transfer of pools situated near middle portion of certain streets in the city.
For the meantime, we take note of this. The, uh, the resolution was, uh, sponsored by Councilor Lito Del Rosario. So, we are referring this to the Committee on Public Safety. Next item?
Letter dated June 5, 2017 from the City Mayor requesting for amendment of Resolution Number 2016, that's 150, on the lease of portion of JMR Corisium by the...
City Properties Committee?
The letter dated June 15 of Mr. Victor General Ocampo, tramover operator, appealing...
Committee on Transportation?
The letter dated June 13 of Mr....
Also Committee on Transportation, together with item number 14, 15, and 15. Okay.
The proposed ordinance of the Honorable Lito is Sider Rosario, Honorable Salvador Del Castillo, Honorable Elmeres Baltimore, Honorable Tomas Ramon Isánchez, amending ordinance number 2006, that's 065, by expanding the wheel clamp area coverage and...
Considering that the principal author is, uh, indisposed? Ah, okay, okay. What is the pleasure of the Honorable Lito Del Rosario on item number 16?
I move that we de, devar consideration.
For the next session?
Yes, yes.
Okay, the secretary is instructed to include this under unfinished business for our next session. Next item?
Proposed ordinance of Honorable Milla is Rakideroya and co-author of Honorable Julia Silabadia Jr., Honorable Cecilia de Assis, regulating the operation of commercial and backyard poultry, pigery, and other livestock farms in the city, providing penalties for violations and for other purpose.
Anyone from the authors? Councilor Rakideroya?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this draft is already, already includes all the comments, um, uh, gathered in the committee hearings and the comments also of the city legal officer. So, we are ready to move for the approval of this proposed ordinance, Mr. Chairman. If there are no more questions?
Anyone? Do we have questions? Councilor Labadia Jr.?
Though co-author, Mr. Chairman, haliminaling pinagulayan ni Councilor Miles, itong tungkol sa backyard pigery and backyard poultry. Ito kumpira talaga si, si ano, si pwedeng, pag-inapod mong backyard, pira lang ang pwede. Yes.
Definition of terms? Uh, 50 heads for chicken and, uh, for... Uh, 50 heads for chicken and uh, for poultry, 5 heads for four-legged um, animals. So 5 and 50. And...
Five?
It cannot be in a residential area, Mr. Chair. So you cannot carry out a backyard farm in a residential area.
Yes. Ang, ang, haloy ko na kaya, Mr. Chairman, pigahagad sa, sa pinaka-main author me ng backyard uh, farm, uh, kung pwedeng gibuhon up to 500.
Backyard?
Oh.
There, there are two animals being talked about.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Sa, sa chicken is 500, and sa baboy is 20.
So this is something that is not yet settled between and among the...
Pig mapaki uli ko lang, Mr. Chairman, baka maconsider, kung day pwede 500, di 400. Kung day 400, di 300.
Um, actually, that definition is recommended by uh, the, uh, si Dr. Elad.
Iyo. Like, Mr. Chairman, ang, ang pigihiling ko po kaya, Mr. Chairman, uh, sarong na yan sa pinopokus kang pamilya na kung ang one head, uh, na chick, makita ka ning 20 pesos. Ang gusto sabihin ko kaya, Mr. Chairman, ang 50 heads mo is makita ka lang ng isang ribo kung kung nagbebenta ka sa neto. Kaya, pigsa sabit ko, Mr. Chairman, kung pwedeng 500, tanganing kumita siya ning more or less in 2 months, 10,000, sa 500. Uh, iyo yan, ang nahihiling ko, Mr. Chairman, tong reality. Sa baboy man, Mr. Chairman, kung 5 heads, nagkikita ka ning 2,000, pero ikikitaon mo siya in the next 8 months, more or less 10,000. Kaya sabi ko, kung pwedeng 20, sakap pwedeng 500. Iyan si pigdi discuss ko. Ta, ang big issue, Mr. Chairman, kang ni Dr. Elad, base duman sa mga libro na babasa niya. Kita, Mr. Chairman, duman sa reality. Papaano makita ang sarong yaon sa bukit? Na kung ang 500 man lang, iyo ang pigaataman mo. Kung day pwede, Mr. Chairman, ning 500, ano ang proposal kang pagiriba? Tanganing uh, tinawang ko lang ng overview, kung papaano kikitaon yan. Ta, sabi pa, uh, gusto ko lang i-record ni Mr. Chairman, sinasabi kang national government na by, by 2, uh, by 2,040, ang income na kang kada Pilipino is 50,000 na. Baka we can start now, na pinapahiling ta kung papaano tatabangan ang mga parauma, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Siguro po hilingon ta si uh, si relevance kang distingson, no? Why are we making a distinction between commercial and backyard farm? Sa backyard farm, kaya, Mr. Chair, dahil siya kaypuhan magkuwaning ECC, no? Dahil itong environmental impact niya, considered as dikit palang, day pa talaga siya um, something na dapat adala ng marahay, magkaigun feasibility study muna, EIA, so dahil siya kaypuhan, if it's just backyard, any number higher than the proposed number as defined as definition for backyard would already require an ECC. That has also been consulted with um, uh, those who have already been, have been involved in the issuance of ECCs for undertaking such as this.
Okay. If we are going to follow the definition under paragraph G, this will mean that so many of those...
Mas kigwa kanila ang sarong anayon, that will be considered as commercial and that will require ECC. Why? Pag nag-aki yan, sampulo, 12. And they will continue to care for that. This will require ECC, and that will be very cumbersome, especially to poor uh, farmers, poor individual. Had there been a study, had there been, ha- have you conducted an interview with with the those persons, say in Kararayan, Carolina? Kadakul po yan, kadakul yan. They're going to close. They're going to close. Uh, Mr. Chairman, ang, ang malinaw digdi, day pwede siya sa residential area. Malinaw yan, okay. Ang, ang pangaduwa, Mr. Chairman, malinaw, kaya kita nagkakagunin backyard farm para kumita man sida, masikalikit. Pinahiling ko, Mr. Chairman, sa 50 heads, deka man makita. Sa 5 heads, deka man makita. Muniyan, kung gusto tang tabangan talaga, Mr. Chairman, kung day pwedeng 500, takadakul na, tigibuhon taning 300. At least yan, Mr. Chairman, 300 na yan ng mga manok-manok, pig adalan tamman yan. Nagluluwas, makita siya, Mr. Chairman, more or less ning 6,000 pesos in 2 months. So sa 2 months na yan, bangaan mo na lang sa duwa, more or less, may 3,000 siya kada bulan. At least pag matanya, nagbabahog-bahog siya. Sa 300 na yan, Mr. Chairman, na payokang manok, dey man yan sobrang kadakul. And may mga technology na kita, Mr. Chairman, na mga indigenous microorganism na day maparong ang sa indang mga waste. Iyo po yan ang gusto tang ipakiulay ko ta sa, sa, ini, ini, sarong issue na lang ako, Mr. Chairman, iyo lang ini. From 50 to 300, from 5, kung day pwede 20, hanggang sampulo, Mr. Chairman. Duna. Counselor Miles, okay? Okay na dam, Mr. Chairman, uh, the total has not her help.
From 50 to 300, is that...
Thank you, Counselor Miles.
Abo pa ni Counselor Miles.
Well, actually, it's difficult to say yes or no, Mr. Chair, because iyon ay nasi ng pagkaagrihan. So we have to justify, kasi uh, the ordinance is also protective of environment and health, no, so it's not really just for economic. These are the three-prong objectives it seeks to address. So dapat mahiling tang maray 'yung interplay kang objectives da, in terms of achieving them. Um, if we're not ready, I think we are, then, then we're not. So therefore, we will not um, move for its approval, no? Although the city mayor has long been requesting, no? So...
Uh, uh, ako ang concerned ko, aside from itong kay Counselor Labadia, kadakul kitang masara na may mga inaataman na uri. Sarong lang na anayon talaga, pag nag-aki yan, tapos inataman si mga aki. Day namang qualify under backyard farming, ta sobra na sa lima, di ba?
Mr. Chairman, side. Counselor Abunal.
Uh, first of all, 'yung number kayang 50, takulaon, nya, consisting of not more than 50, ang sarong na manok, kabali na dyan sa backyard farming. And duwang manok, kabali na dyan sa backyard farming. Um... I, I think if we walk around, we'll see na may mga, may mga residents says big diyo na, may nagkagala ng mga duwa, tulung, manok.
That's correct.
I am personally concerned dahil nagtitipon po kami, Mr. Chairman, muniyan eh, tong mga uh, iba-ibang klase. And uh, that's for pet purposes, not really for commercial.
Uh-uh.
Kung igawa na kayang not more than 50 yan, baka magpundun ako kantoo.
So... Are we ready to approve this? Not yet?
Yes, with those questions, Mr. Chair, I don't think we're ready, so um, I move to defer until the next session.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Miles. We proceed to the next item.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Gregorio R. Abunal, reiterating the social service mission of the health and medical services and facilities of the city through the city health office.
This is pending before the committee on health and ways and means? So we are referring this back to that committee.
The copy of the local expenditures program from January 1 to December 31, 2017.
Noted. Next item. Noted.
The joint committee report to the committee on appropriations, laws and ordinances, and infrastructure.
Who will render the report? Okay, the Honorable Cecilia de Assis.
The committee hearing was held on June 14, but there was no quorum on the, of the three committees, so we'd like to elevate this to the body and to be taken as a committee of the whole. I, I move for the acknowledgement of the report, Mr. Chair.
Your report is duly acknowledged, and we are converting ourselves into a committee of the whole.
The first item was the proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Lito Del Rosario and City Youth Counselor Kirwin Hidalgo entitled an ordinance instituting the program on awards and incentives for service excellence, praise, and appropriating funds for the purpose. Uh, in the absence of the proponents, the committee resolved to defer consideration of the matter. This was deferred, Mr. Chair.
This is deferred?
Second item. Letter dated May 19, 2017 from his honor, the city mayor, withdrawing his earlier request for authority dated May 12, 2017, to charge against the Naga River Rehabilitation and Development Fund and submitting the program of work for the Naga River dredging project. May go directly to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Please proceed.
On motion of Honorable Elmer Valdemoro, duly seconded, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunean Panglunsod uh, for the approval of the program of work for the Naga River dredging project. So I therefore move, Mr. Chair.
Same is approved, Mrs. Chair.
Item number...
Counselor Del Rosario.
I object, Mrs. Chair.
Uh-huh. So there being an objection? If there is no further discussion, would, would you like to tell us your reasons for objection?
Mrs. Chair, with due respect to Mam Nene, dredging the Naga River after the establishment of the rebetment is very dangerous. Grabe ang current kang waters, unpredictable. Even 'yung mga drakula, mga buildings, Mrs. Chair. Pag napupunan na ma-kalkal ang foundation, inaatong o na ano eh. Muniyan, naeestablish na po si rebetment, then sa kaka-dredes, big uh, big uh, hero muniyan si...
Foundation.
Foundation kan si dagat, and it will lead to, uh, baka masayang po, Mrs. Chair, ang rebetment dagan.
There was an explanation by engineer...
Counselor Elmer Valdemoro? Thank you, Counselor Del Rosario.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, according to engineer Martin, Mr. Chair, tapos na po si dredging. The, the program of work is intended for the hauling katong mga big dredes. Nayaon man lang, nayaon man girary sa salug. So nadredes na po siya. Hauling na lang katong mga nadredes na material para mahali po sa salug. So ang, ang dredging po, no, no more further dredging, just to clarify, Mr. Chair. The, the program of work is intended for the hauling of the dredge materials.
If that is the case, then why is it still entitled Naga River Dredging Project? Program of work for the Naga River Dredging Pro- Project?
Because...
Since it is a part of the dredging project, Mr. Chair.
Under the... It's a component of the dredging program project, Mr. Chair. See... Item number...
Counselor Del Castillo.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, for the information of this body, um, few months pa, we already authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with the DPWA for the dredging of the Naga River. And now, what, uh, before us now is the charging of the amount of 4.7 million, uh, which is part of the obligation of the city to haul all the dredge materials from the river. Para dahina siya magpara-dagdag duman sa mga sediment sa Naga River. So my, actually, si dredging tapos na. Uh, mahaul na lang kita kan si tong mga big haraling materialis sa salug para mahali siya, na rin dahina magdagdag duman sa mga sediment sa Naga River. But we must remember, Mr. Chair, that we already authorized the mayor. We cannot withdraw at this point in time that authority given to the mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Del Castillo. I can still clearly recall when this was first brought to our attention. You made the point. Oop. That, that one, uh, stated by Counselor Del Rosario. At any rate, in this document entitled Naga River Dredging Project, item C number 1, continuance and expansion of dredging operations from Station 1 to Station 3, from February 6, 2017 to August 18, 2017. Was there a clarification as to whether or not dredging will still be undertaken? The representation of Counselor Valdemoro is that only hauling will be undertaken. So what is it really that is going to be undertaken?
As is stated in item number 6, engineer Martin specifically said that the Naga River dredge is now in second phase, and the second phase is concerned with the hauling of the dredge materials. So, ang sabi niya po, sa, tapos na si dredging, so ang kaypuhan na lang is halion si mga yaon sa gilid, na kung day ito hahalion, mabalik man lang po dako.
Therefore, can we limit ourselves only to the approval of all projects or activities for hauling? Meaning no further dredging is to be undertaken, if that is all right? Counselor Valdemoro?
Maybe we could add revision to the uh, resolution, Mr. Chair, but the, the request is primarily is the approval of the program of work uh, for the charging against the Naga River Development Fund. Ipo to si pinaka-main request, uh, the approval of the program of work for, uh, para po maka-charge duman sa uh, Naga, uh, Naga River, uh, fund.
Okay. So our approval is for the charging against the Naga River Rehabilitation Fund and uh, for purposes of hauling all those items left in connection with the previous dredging activities, if that is all right? Okay?
So disposition, Mr. Chair? Disposition is a notion of Honorable Valdemoro, duly seconded, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunean Panglunsod the approval of the program of work for the Naga River dredging, dredging project. So I therefore move, Mr. Chair.
Same is approved.
Okay, item number 3, proposed ordinance sponsored by Honorable Julian Labadia Junior, entitled an ordinance appropriating the amount of 1,500,000 pesos to cover the grant of educational assistance for calendar year 2017 of officials and employees of the city government of Naga, chargeable against the 2016 surplus. May I go directly to the disposition?
Please proceed.
The committee resolved to refer the matter back to the proponent.
Okay.
So we were, we are returned, except.
Peril back to me?
Mr. Chairman, uh, actually, uh, nagmamadali kang gibuhon yan, kaya nagluwas dyan, ako lang si author, napigtao sa kuya. Itong approved ordinance na yao ang paketo si Counselor Miles yata, Counselor Reynola, na nagtao kita sa mga empleado, worth 800,000. Nagestimate lang po, Mr. Chairman, more or less, na 1,000,000 na ang casual sa ka ang uh, regular employee kang city hall. So, igwap kitang ordinance sa kayan na 2,005, DAS sa... dahsa 216. Ipo'to si approved ordinance na nagtatao kaini 'yung proposed ordinance, Mr. Chairman. So iyo man po 'yan si paabot sa tuya kang mga empleado. Sa kung kadakul, umapakaagnanik na, Mr. Chairman, 'yung sisso basi dumansan sa surplus ta, mga kadikit na mga purupusti. Ano talo, da'yo tatawanan ang mga empleado neng assistance dumansan sa mga aki na nangangai po talaga. So iyo man yan, Mr. Chairman, ang nahihiling tang, pwede tang maitabang sa mga empleado. Dahil all the basis katung ordinance 2,005. And even the mayor, Mr. Chairman, was among who approved the ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Counselor Valdemoro?
First, Mr. Chair, I'm not the one who requested the legal basis. It's, I think, the City Budget Officer. Naghanap siyang legal basis. However, Mr. Chair, may nabanggit na pong ordinance number, could we plus the ordinance para mahiling tanapu ito?
Ordinance number 2,005,000 126, Christine. 126, 2,005,000, 126... There is none? There is no such an ordinance?
Can you refer this back to the-
Okay, so we are referring this back to the proponent. Next item.
Item number 4. Proposed. Proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Mila S. Diracida Royo and co-authored by Honorable City Youth Counselor Janelle Jade Paredes, entitled an ordinance extending the City Youth Officials Program of the City Government of Naga as a platform for youth development by prescribing certain measures that promote attainment, thereof providing funds for the purpose and for other purposes. In the absence of the proponent, Mr. Chair, the committee resolved to defer consideration of the matter.
This is deferred. Next item. Counselor Greg Abonal? Okay, please proceed, Counselor Diazis.
Item number 5. First endorsement dated April 21, 2017 from the Office of the City Mayor endorsing the letter dated April 14, 2017 from Ms. Penia Francia S. Bagasina, student, marine nurse, polytechnic colleges, requesting financial assistance in connection with her participation to the ASEAN Youth Exchange and Education Program 2017 on July 3 to 8, 2017 in Vietnam. May I go directly to the disposition?
Yes, please.
The committee resolved to deny the request for financial assistance of Ms. Penia Francia S. Bagasina considering that she's not a resident of Naga City. Which is... So this matter was denied.
Okay, so denied?
Item number 6 and 7 were treated simultaneously. Item number 6, letter dated May 22, 2017 from Mr. Joaquin Marx B. Garcia and Mr. Delmar Kent Baluyot students at Teneo de Naga University, asking financial assistance for their participation in the United Nations Youth Assembly in August 9 to 12, 2017 at the United Nations Headquarters in New York, USA. Item number 7, letter dated June 5, 2017 from Mr. Ramon Dominic Noblesa, student at Teneo de Naga University, requesting financial assistance for his participation to the UN Summer Youth Assembly in New York, USA on August 5 to 13, 2017. Disposition, may I go directly to the disposition?
Please proceed.
Disposition, on motion of Honorable Elmer Valdemoro, seconded by Honorable Ray An Rentoi, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglunsod to extend the financial assistance amounting to 10,000 pesos each to Mr. Joaquin Marx Garcia and Mr. Delmar Kent Baluyot students at Teneo de Naga University in connection with their participation in the United Nations Youth Assembly, which will be held at the United Nations Headquarters, New York, USA on August 9 to 12, 2017. So I therefore move, Mr. Chair.
Same is approved.
Second motion, on motion of Honorable Elmer-
Counselor Del Castillo?
Just a query, Mr. Chair. What's the source of the fund for this assistance?
Source of fund? Counselor Diazis?
From donations, Mr. Chair.
Donation of what office, Mr. Chair?
From the Office of- Office of the Mayor.
Okay. Just, I just want to clarify the matter.
Okay.
This was it.
Counselor Diazis, source of fund?
Uh, from donation from under the Office of the Mayor.
Okay.
Uh, second motion, on motion of Honorable Elmer Valdemoro, seconded by Honorable Ray An Sidri Rentoi, the committee further resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglunsod to extend the financial assistance amounting to 15,000 pesos to Mr. Ramon Dominic A. Noblesa, student at Teneo de Naga University in connection with his participation in the United Nations Summer-
Counselor Del Castillo?
I noticed, Mr. Chair, that we are being selective in the grant of financial assistance. On the first portion, we are giving 10,000 each. But this time, we are giving 15,000. What's the difference between the three?
The difference?
They are, they will be going to the United States. So the amount should be, um, the same, 10,000 pesos, Mr. Chairman.
May iba-iba po kayang module na big applyan. So every module has, may iba-iba man ang amount. Pero si duwa, may mga package, package. Ang big ano kang duwa is lesser than itong big koan ni Noblesa.
But I believe, Mr. Chair, that we should be, we should give, treat all these requests similarly. Um, they will be going to the US, to New York particularly. So I believe that we should only give each 10,000 pesos.
Okay. Counselor Abonal?
Mr. Chairman, tama po ito. We should treat them similarly if they are in similar situation. Itong duwa, duwang paragraf yan. Itong sarong paragraf is one package worth 1,5. This other package is 2,5. They are not similar.
So I therefore move that for the second, for the second motion, Mr. Chair, to extend 15,000 to Mr. Ramon Dominic Noblesa.
Any second? Is there an objection? There is an objection. But before the voting, Counselor Valdemoro?
Just want to add a provision to the granting of assistance that in case they didn't attend to that particular activity, they should return the amount. Deto po kay, may man, may man sinang liquidation. Pwede nang iprocess ahead the assistance. Anong assurance that they attended? So we must add a provision just in case na they sinang nagattend, they should return the amount that they request.
They should therefore be required to render a report?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. Let us go back to the motion. There is an objection. But I think the objection is only with respect to the amount. Okay. So those in favor of the motion, kindly raise your right hand.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8.
8, is it 8? Those against?
1.
Abstention? Po ulang namang kitang saro. So how many? Mr. Secretary, how many voted in favor of the motion?
9.
9, Mr. Secretary.
Okay. With a vote of 9 in favor and 2, and 1 against, with 1 abstention, the motion is approved.
Item number 8, proposed ordinance entitled an ordinance reverting the amount of 150,000 pesos from the Enable Fund Special Purpose Allocation, SPA, as well as the amount of 110,000 pesos from the maintenance and other operating expenses of the Sangguneang Panglunsod of Naga to the unappropriated balance and appropriating the same to the capital outlay of the Sangguneang Panglunsod of Naga. Disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Elmer Valdemoro, July 2nd, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglunsod the passage of an ordinance reverting the amount of 150,000 pesos from the Enable Fund Special Purpose Allocation as well as the amount of 110,000 pesos from the maintenance and other operating expenses of the Sangguneang Panglunsod to the unappropriated balance and appropriating the same to the capital outlay of the Sangguneang Panglunsod of Naga. So I therefore move, Mr. Chair.
May I propose a modification? We, um, we failed to consider the cost for tinting, tinting, uh, of the front door and panels, side windows, and the SP Secretariat door closer. This will amount to 44,900. We can charge this against the printing and publication expenses. So if it is all right, that we include the amount of 44,900.
But is that included in the request?
Madam Chairman. We remove, we remove the tint for the meantime.
Okay, what's the consensus of the members? Are we going to include the request of the Vice Mayor to include the tinting?
Uh, 44,900.
44, chargeable again?
Uh, printing and publication.
Printing and publication.
Without objection, same is approved.
Okay. Next item, Mr. Chair. Item number 9, letter dated June 9, 2017 from the City Planning and Development Coordinator submitting the amended 2011-20 Local Development Investment Program for consideration approval. In the absence of the CPDO Coordinator, the committee resolved to defer consideration of the matter. The committee further resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglunsod to invite the City Planning and Development Coordinator to attend the next regular session of the Sangguneang Panglunsod. Are we going to next session? So matter was deferred and also to invite the CPDO Coordinator to attend the next regular session.
Okay.
That ends my-
Yes, Counselor Del Castillo?
Uh, may I request a copy of that local investment program?
The secretary will please furnish, the Honorable Del Castillo?
That covers 2011 to 2020.
Uh, to furnish, to furnish all members of the Sangguneang Panglunsod?
All members of this body.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That ends my report, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Labadia?
Uh, last July 18, Mr. Chairman, 2,005, that was a joint and collective motion of all the members of the councils. The ordinance was passed, ordinance 2005-054 in the amount of 888,000, granting the educational assistance for year 2005. That is ordinance number 2,005-054, which was the legal basis of the proposed ordinance filed by almost all the members of the council, Mr. Chairman. So I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that we come up with a joint and collective motion for the proposed ordinance, Mr. Chairman.
Education? Ano to, educational? Educational, eh flash mo na.
See, 2,000- Christine?
2,005-054.
Is ordinance number 2,005-054 available in your computer?
Copy flash na lang. How about also the charter bonus? Educational. May flash?
Why don't we have a soft copy of the ordinance, Christine? What's the reason? That is not signed by the mayor? Meaning that was not approved? That is not signed? So apparently that ordinance was not approved by the city mayor?
I have an ordinance which was signed.
That ends my report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Counselor Greg Abonal?
Mr. Chairman, um, in the item, um-
By the way, Counselor Diazis is now excused.
In the item, Mr. Chairman, I do not remember the number. But that was the request for financial assistance for the students going to New York. Um, one of the items raised was an object, well, a question from the Budget Office, sir. Um, clearly indicating that there is no program that can support all this financial assistance. Ang line of thinking niya, kung may owning basis, liquidating maggrant. Nevertheless, the committee went on to approve. I don't know exactly what will happen. But this is something that has been recurring. I mean recently, biga hanapaning basis for granting of trophies. Biga hanapaning basis for granting of financial assistance, et cetera, et cetera. Um, he says that even if we've been doing this in the past, doesn't mean that we should go on. In other words, we need basis for granting of financial assistance for studies, for contests, for competition, for, for whatever. Um, in like manner, we may be needing basis for the grant of trophies and gift packages, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
Um, I am informed that bahala na na siya kayan. I think there was earlier arrangement that he would draft the basis for this.
Okay.
Now, anytime, Mr. Chairman, between now and tomorrow, baka ikwan na namang neng request.
Okay. Insofar as the latter is concerned, I mean, I am referring to trophies and related request. PJ had already prepared a draft ordinance in consultation with Mr. Frank Mendoza. So anytime, it's going to be submitted before us for possible sponsorship of anyone from us and consideration later on. But with respect to financial assistance in the likes of the one we have just approved, uh, we, you might be able to consider passing necessary ordinance or probably include that in the, in the, uh, in the ordinance involving the request for various, uh, for trophies and similar items. Let's see if that can be included in that proposed ordinance. Otherwise, a separate ordinance will have to be considered. Okay? We proceed to the next item.
The letter dated June 16, 2017 from Mr. Gilbert Albero, submitting the activity and financial report of the 2016 vehicle businessman.
Noted? Noted? Next item.
The proposed term of preference for the eastbound terminal.
Counselor Lito Del Rosario.
Mr. Chairman, if I may request, kung pwedeng inuton po si resolution terminating yung Keybencia before the TOR. Anyway, ang TOR is item number 22, ang proposed resolution, Mr. Chairman, is item number 23.
Okay. Please proceed.
As shown, Mr. Chairman, is the proposed resolution, resolution terminating the discussion with Rubi Shelters and Development Corporation presented by Engineer Benja regarding establishment of the eastbound bound terminal. Whereas, this Sangguneang Panglunsod of Naga has accepted the proposal of Rubi Shelters Development Corporation represented by Engineer Benja to establish a permanent eastbound bound terminal. Whereas, on several locations, Engineer Benja has submitted documents that were found to have discrepancies when checked particularly with the registry of deeds. It was found out that the land title of the proposed lot has 11 notice of dispendence and adverse claims among others. Whereas, Mr. Chairman, during the regular session last May 30, 2017, the Sangguneang Panglunsod requested from Engineer Benja was present during the session some important documents, particularly the financial profile of his proposed project among others. The proponent affirmatively answered and promised to submit the same within the 15-day period given by the Sangguneang Panglunsod. Whereas, the said 15-day period already lapsed last June 14. However, the proponent failed to comply and submit the required documents. Whereas, it is but rather to terminate discussion with Engineer Benja with regards to his proposed establishment of the eastbound bound terminal so that the city government can now proceed to consider other options. Whereas, it is the right of the commuting public to have a decent and orderly terminal. Whereas, it is the obligation of the city government to answer the needs of the public by establishing a permanent eastbound bound PUJ terminal. I therefore move, Mr. Chairman, that we terminate discussions with Engineer Benja as regards the establishment of the eastbound bound terminal.
Christine, please show us the first whereas clause. The first whereas clause.
We did not actually approve, we did not accept the proposal. We just entertained it, but we did not accept. If we make use of the term "accepted", that implies that we approved when we did not because we still have to study to evaluate it. So if it is all right with the Honorable Del Rosario, we replace the term "accepted" by probably what?
Entertained.
Entertained?
Entertained.
Okay, so Counselor Labadia Junior. Okay, with that modification, do I hear a second to the motion? Is there an objection? Is there an objection? Objection, there being an objection? Yes, Counselor Labadia Junior? Counselor Akid Arroyo, Counselor Rintoy, Counselor Abonal, in that order.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I am objecting on grounds of propriety. Because I believe, mas kisi Simon baga pwede magsubmit satuyan ang mga proposals. Nasasatuyan kung anong aksyon ang satungggibuhon dyan. But to declare na dahil kita makikipagulay di di sa taong ini tungkol sa sarungbagay na iyan, I don't think that's, there's a need for that. I think ang ma-accomplice lang kayan is garo pigpuput down tayning taong ini. So kung may magsarapit pa siya sa tu... We're free to decide how we will treat any submission that he may have in the future, in the future if he may so decide. Sabihan ika yan, we shouldn't burn bridges. Kasi garo araw ka ni garo pigburn na na ang bridges na dahil na kayo makikiulay sa iyo patungkol di diyo sa paguurulayan na ining proposal mo dahil na kayo makikiulay dyan. I don't think that's proper, I don't think that's necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Akid Arroyo. Counselor Rayan Rintoy.
Chairman, I really am not comfortable in passing a resolution declaring or terminating the entertaining of the documents to be submitted by Mr. Benja to this august chamber. In fact, anyone can submit documents before this chamber at any time. Gustong sabihon pag sinabitan na tigdeklaratan habo na na makiuulay, iyan na nga ang hulugan garo magiging president man ini sa iba. Na gustong sabihon pala pag habo na kamyembo makiuulay, habo na ka sangguneang makiuulay, magpass na lang ng resolution ng siring para mapundo na tulos. Sa ilin ko, may hinahalat kitang dokumento pi Mr. Benja, naglap siya kang nakaterang aldaw pa man lang anakalipa. Sa ilin ko, may sufficient type pa man para halaton na kung makakasubmit talaga siya. And kung day man makasubmit, day man kaipuhan magsubmit ay magpass ng resolution na tigde declare mo na habo mo na makiuulay. Gustong sabihon pag de siya nagsubmit, di magdecide na ang sanggunean without declaring, without this resolution being passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Rintoy. Counselor Abonal.
Two things, Mr. Chairman. First, yung sa second whereas, in much earlier session, Mr. Chairman, na binilang tangani na may difference niya. First, it was nine, it became ten, now it became eleven. May I just verify whether or not his last appearance here, did he accept or did he not deny all those things? Di ba kinorekanya yan, eleven na yan? In other words, my impression is clear yang eleven na yan. That's the impression I have. And therefore, to include that in the resolution may be misleading. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, yung mga tricycle na ni, taon ang nakaaki, tinawagan tanging fifteen days, thirty days, inay na kalampas na four days, pupunduhon tatulos. Third, I think it would be best if we simply say, "We deny your proposal" rather than say, "I will not talk to you anymore."
Thank you, Counselor Greg Abonal, Counselor Díaz, and then Counselor Vidal Castillo. Thank you, Counselor Díaz. Counselor Vidal Castillo, and then Counselor Baldimoro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Keta pong pigimbitantas si Engineer Benja, duwang bagay po si sakuyang nutaran. Primo, iguanin ang opposition duwang sa duwang hospital, Bicol Access saka NICC. Ikaduwa, itong may mga incomprances, itong sayang titulo. Na masakit pa magparahalat kang parayon ang titulo. Siguro po, magiguanan ang time limit kung hanggang December 2017 kaya niyang magtaunin malinaw na mga dokumento di diyo. Pero kung magparahatong kita, matatapos ang termino hanggang 2019, garo salaman. Kaya siguro, mungyan dyan po, Mr. Chairman, o ayusun niyan sa mga dokumento hanggang December 2017, may problema magparahat. Pero kung hanggang sa 2019, bigaprahat kita, may problema ang sayang titulo. Garo, bakum marayam, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Baldimoro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am amenable, Mr. Chair, to change the tender of the resolution. Pero the point is, Mr. Chair, kung da ita tininterminate si offer ni Mr. Benja, sige lang kitang halat. We're waiting for several months. And da inagmumove itong supposedly intended project, da ito inuulayan dahil nga ni nagahalat kita sa offer ni Mr. Benja. Magtotoo, ako po personally approve ako sa offer niya. Pero kung totoo da eh, may ang kasigurohan. Kaya nga ako po baga, Mr. Chair, ako itong mismong nagmove, natawan siya ng specific period to submit. So may I know categorically from the secretariat, Mr. Chair, kung itong tinawutan fifteen days, may naisubmit ba si Engineer Benja?
The secretary, please. Well, I think it's clear during the two or three sessions ago that there were two important matters that we decided on. Number one, with respect to the liens and/or incomprances in the title for Engineer Benja to show to us that the area being offered is free from any and on liens. Number two, with respect to his capacity to finance the construction of the proposed terminal building. So that should be the content of the letter that Engineer Benja should have received from the secretary. If I still recall it right, it was the Honorable Elmer Valdemoro who raised that second point. So may we know from the secretary if the letter was already delivered to Engineer Benja containing these two important matters?
That particular letter was sent and duly received by Engineer Benja. Actually, I can recall, Mr. Chair, that he already replied based on that request of the Sangguneang Panglunsod. We're just checking the last document he submitted for consideration.
Okay, can we also be shown the copy of the letter you sent to Engineer Benja? Counselor Baldimoro.
I think, Mr. Chair, for record na lang itong pigsend na letter, in open session, nag-agree si Engineer Benja to submit within fifteen days, starting from the regular session. So nagalat lang kitang two session to submit. Si bilang kung fifteen days na tinawta, starting from that session, not from the receipt of the letter.
Okay, you may be correct, Counselor Elmer Valdemoro. Now, with respect to the second whereas clause, just for the clarification of everyone. Because I was the one who pointed out the liens and incomprances annotated in the title. Now, the title speaks for itself. There are indeed annotations in the document. And whatever denial that Engineer Benja will make, that will not matter given the annotations in the title. So that is clear. In so far as his admission is concerned, he was telling us that indeed there is that claim affecting the portion that was offered to us, but there is only one according to him. Out of the eleven, the ten does not cover the area offered to us. But there is one claim, there is one incomprise affecting the 6,000 square meters. And this is what he promised to us, that he will present necessary document to show that the 6,000 square meter property is free, indeed free from any and on liens or incomprances. But that is not easy to do because the lien is already annotated in the title. Even if we give him one month, two months, I am sure that he cannot do that yet because it's not within his control. He will still have to what? Talk to the person having claim, for that person to waive his claim over the subject property. And if a waiver is executed, he will still have to go to the register of deeds. So even if we give him one month or two months, I'm sure he will fail. He will fail. Counselor Labadia Junior, and then Counselor Jose Ranjola.
With due respect, Mr. Chairman, since there was a motion, there was a second, there was an objection, can we request for a vote?
We will come to that, we will come to that. Counselor Jose Ranjola.
Well, without manifestation, Mr. Chair, what are we waiting for? I think Engineer Sia will not begrudge us. We've given him the ample time, the leeway, all the benefit of him to present to us necessary papers. And yet, it seems that there are some deceit on his part. So it's either now that we, of course, go into that resolution, I may not also agree with that. But I agree with the observation suggestion of the Honorable Abonal that we might as well deny if, if you want to deny, or approve if, if you want to approve. So it's denyan or approval.
Without us necessarily passing this ordinance. Counselor Del Rosario, are you still insisting on this proposed resolution? Or we just go on with your proposed terms of reference?
Yes, Mr. Chair, after hearing the very definitions of the members of the Sangguneang, especially on burning bridges, I'm amenable in not pursuing the resolution, Mr. Chair.
So this is considered withdrawn?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We don't have to vote, Counselor Labadia Junior, considering that the motion was withdrawn. Okay? So, next item?
The proposed term of reference.
Again, Counselor Jose Lito Del Rosario.
Mr. Chair, sometime four months back or five months back, we initially discussed for two successive sessions the proposed ordinance providing forms for the terms of reference for the lease, development, and utilization of the city property in Barangay Lerma into mixed-use UV Express and PUJ terminal for eastbound routes. Nakaabot po kita, Mr. Chairs, I think Section 11. We initially discussed the earlier provisions and also, Section 9, Mr. Chair, Section 9, as the construction timeline. Construction on all portions of the lease property must commence within one month from the date of ratification of the lease contract by the Sangguneang Panglunsod and must be completed in nine months from such commencement. There were also concerns as regards the bidding provisions wherein the BAC or the Business Awards Committee shall use the criteria set forth in Section 11, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
So, during the sessions, we had, we discussed majority provisions, it was a proposed terms of reference, Mr. Chair. Unless there are still further clarifications or questions from the other members of the Sangguneang Panglunsod.
Any question? Counselor Akid Arroyo.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I am waiting for the motion in a second before we discuss, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Counselor Del Rosario, are you moving for the approval of the proposed ordinance?
Mr. Chair, I may therefore move that we pass an ordinance providing for the terms of reference for the lease, development, and utilization of the city property in Barangay Lerma into mixed-use UV Express and PUJ terminal for eastbound routes, Mr. Chair.
Do I hear a second? Is there an objection? Okay, there being an objection? Any discussion? Anyone? Counselor Akid Arroyo, Counselor Del Castillo, Counselor Abonal, and then Counselor Vidal. Counselor Abunal, and then Counselor Vidal Castillo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to remind everyone of the previous disposition of the Sangunean that the utilization of that property, that property of the city as PUV terminal, public utility vehicle, terminal for eastbound vehicles, was conditioned, was subject to certain conditions. May we know if the conditions have already been complied with, such as the provision for the roads, both ingress and egress from that proposed facility has already been prepared? Because the thinking there for Mr. Chair is that we cannot utilize that property for the purpose for which it's being now proposed if the roads that are really very important to prevent congestion in that area will not be there. So may we know from the proponent if those conditions have been complied with?
Counselor Del Rosario?
Yeah, if I could still recall it right, madam, the City Engineers Office, Engineer Palmeano, presented to us the plans for the construction of the road. Pagluwas po saka, sipala po, mayang ang problema kundi sipaluwas, pasiring duman sa atubangan kang generator sa may bus terminal. Yung po to ang access road, paluwas duman sa intended bus terminal. Apagaisiko po may, kontama ang pagaisiko po may pundu na ito na pig-aappropriate ang city. Kabali na ito duma sa mga inutang mga pig-approved. So, kontama lang po ang reconnection ko. So, as far as the query on the establishment or the construction of a road, I think I can confidently say, Mr. Chair, that we already approved that part.
Okay. If I heard it right earlier, Mr. Frank Mendoza told us that there is still this amount of about 13 million pesos. We do not know to which it will be allocated. Does this already include that the construction abroad in the area?
May nahiiling na po ako, Mr. Chair, na mapa and may amount na for the construction, including si timeline. Siguro, Mr. Chair, if we still have time, we can probably ask our budget officer and the city engineer to enlighten us.
The secretary is instructed to require the presence of Mr. Frank Mendoza.
Uh, Mr. Chair...
What about the road lots required?
Siguro the city engineer could appraise us, Mr. Chair.
The acquisition, because I know for a fact that there is an area that will be affected that is not owned by the city. So that will have to be acquired. Has the area been already determined? How much? How big?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, considering that it's already 3 o'clock in the afternoon, siguro we defer this matter, Mr. Chair, for consideration next session. Imbitan na tapos si mga concerned officials.
We will expect that you will be ready for the presentation of the necessary data in response to the concern raised by the Honorable Miller Rakid Arroyo. Because I understand that is not only, that is not the concern only of Counselor Miller Rakid Arroyo, that is everyone's concern.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Including yung si mga owners ng lot na maapik trampukan si...
Yes, in the corresponding area.
I understand, Mr. Chair, that the majority of the lots that tumatraverse Cantinampo is owned by my best friend, Engineer Bensia.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Counselor Abunal?
Mr. Chairman, if we're going to Robinsons anyway, may I suggest that we pass by so that we see how tall the building is that covers the proposed area?
Okay, okay, okay. We can do that, we can do that. Counselor Del Castillo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, with the motion that we defer consideration of this matter, I will just reserve my query for... Not necessarily an objection, Mr. Chair, because I believe that our action in this particular matter has a relationship with the previous matter we have taken up.
Okay, understood. Thank you, Counselor Del Castillo. Counselor Del Rosario?
If I may ask now, Counselor Del Castillo, kung ano po ang opinion niya ngayon?
Okay. For the meantime, we defer discussion until next session. We will be inviting Engineer Palmeano, Frank Mendoza, including Mr. Willie Pries Jr., for them to bring necessary documents involving the proposed road. Okay. Counselor Labadia Junior?
Chairman, itong ordinance 2005 to 054, nakahiring na po, Mr. Chairman. So we will request the vice-chairman, ay, the chairman, to include in the next regular session po.
Okay, next session. The secretary is instructed. Counselor Rakid Arroyo and Counselor Abunal?
Uh, Mr. Chair, item number 19 of the unfinished business. Actually, I was the one in the last session who requested that be included in the agenda. My purpose, Mr. Chair, was concerning the general provisions of the expenditure program, the appropriations ordinance. But I think we just noted it. Can we go back to item number 19, Mr. Chair?
Item number 19?
Yes.
Okay, before that, Counselor Abunal?
Mr. Chairman, which office here can say for sure who owns what property? The point I'm asking is, baka magtroklingan na namang kung kisay ang loting matatraverse Cantinampo.
Okay. The city assessor is supposed to have information that we need and therefore we will also require his presence.
Yeah, but can we... Informing in advance, Mr. Chairman, that we are interested in the ownership of particular lots?
Yes, yes. The secretary will please ensure that the parties being requested to be present during our next regular session have sufficient information about the matter that we will be discussing and the information that we are seeking from them. Okay? Okay, we go back to item number 19. Counselor Rakid Arroyo?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, Mr. Chair, the document submitted to us does not state the ordinance number that embodies this particular annual expenditure program. All the other budget, annual budget that we have had indicated the ordinance, but this one does not contain it.
The secretary? Why is that?
Itong local expenditure, itang kuwan ang budget, ordinance number.
The document, Mr. Chair, came from the city budget office.
So may we know what ordinance number embodies our annual expenditure program?
May I request the Honorable Cecilia Diazis to temporarily preside? I have to respond to personal necessity.
To get forward purposes of time constraint, due to time constraint, may I just request therefore that we calendar this again in the next session? Thank you.
Okay, in a second, and just take note, Mr. Secretary. Okay, next item?
New business, the endorsement from the budget officer endorsing the Reversion Ordinance of Barangay Carolina.
Refer to committee on appropriation.
The letter dated June 14 from Mr. Richard Rivera, applying a gaming permit for suwan to pagkore. The letter dated June 9 of Mr. Earl David Hunyo. The letter dated June 6 from Mr. Eric Salvino, Program Manager Ginawang Nagenyo, expressing apology for submitting leak the AIP of DSWD Ginawang Nagenyo program for the year 2018.
This is included in the endorsement?
Apology man lang po, please.
I apologize, madam. Noted.
The letter dated June 14, 2017 from Mr. Dodel Taniegra, informing that he was not able to attend the hearing on his request for extension, have franchise for certain reasons.
Okay, Honorable Del Castillo?
Madam Chair, I believe that we should inform Mr. Taniegra that we are definitely or finally denying the request because he is not the franchisee as appearing in our records. So there is no need for the committee, I believe, to hear this particular matter, ah, Madam Chair.
The secretary is instructed to inform Mr. Dodel Taniegra denying the request, denying his application based on the comments made by Honorable Del Castillo. Next?
The endorsement from the Tremobil Task Force endorsing the applications for...
Committee on Transport?
The budget call and the guidelines for the 2018 annual budget.
Noted.
The request of the Naga City Council for Women for inclusion in the 2018 AIP.
Okay, also noted.
Also, the request for...
Ano 'yan is, NCPO? Fireworks?
By...
Liquor ban? Thank you, Honorable Valdemoro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I understand that the NCPO is requesting measures on the fireworks display and other pyrotechnic materials as well as the ordinance on the liquor ban.
Please in order?
The endorsement dated June 16, 2017 from the Office of the City Mayor.
Having given charge to the liquor ban, please in order? Firework, can we refer this to the committee on?
Public safety.
Public safety.
The endorsement dated June 16, 2017 from the Office of the City Mayor endorsing the letter of Mr. Ramil Olivieros, applying for ITRI.
Ano 'yan?
ITRI.
ITRI, transport.
Other matters, the letter dated June 13 from Ms. Gillian Magalona Abigoldad, expressing gratitude and thanks for being part of the Naga City Scholar Guild and informing that her dreams of becoming a CPA came true when she passed the May 2017 CPA License Your Examination.
Would like to sponsor the resolution, a congratulation? Noted, acknowledging the letter and the resent a congratulatory resolution. Okay, next item?
Nominal voting.
Okay, Honorable Labadia?
Uh, she requests, Madam Chairman, tungkol duman sa Committee on Manpower, that we will request, we will direct the secretary to write Mr. Orsoa and the department heads for the job orders and contractual to attend the plug ceremony on July 3, Monday. And after the plug ceremony, Madam Chairman, there will be a committee hearing to be called for by the Committee on Manpower dyan sa Naga City People's Hall.
The secretary is directed? Next item, Honorable Abunal?
Might there be certain preparations for the job order and casual employees who may not, who may be necessarily working in their stations during the meeting, Mr. Chairman? O optional bang attendance or whatever? I think we should be clear. We should be clear. In other words, pag sinabing compulsory, both sa biyong kabust na department should be ready na mayu 'yan mga tao 'yan during that time. Secondly, what happens kung di magtunga? I think that, at least on this occasion, we should, we should be clear about the matter. Pag a-plug ceremony, dapat magaratin, rayaong bakar, lakaw-lakaw. Kung pwede man sa napalana di magatin, pwede. I think we should be clear on this, Madam Chair. So the communication should state very clearly that attendance is a must.
And then the matter to be taken up during the...
Those who are not there should not report for work anymore beginning July 1.
Okay, noted. Honorable Rintoy?
The purpose of the Committee on Manpower as to calling these people.
It was suggested by Honorable Liti Labadia?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, ang committee kang manpower, yun 'yang nag-assure na ang mga nagtatrabaho sa city hall, talaga sinang naiinspirar, as in, ginigibo nila ang trabaho. We will just remind them na sinda as job order and, ano 'to? Casual and contractual na maybe pag magayunan sa inang trabaho, baka maging casual na sinda o regular. We will inspire them to work harder, Madam Chairman. Yan ang pinakapurpose why ka dapat makaulay tayning mga, yao sa job order and contractual, Madam Chairman.
Okay, Honorable Rintoy, does that answer your query?
Can we check on the functions of the Committee on Manpower? If it really falls into that, Madam Chair?
Okay, can you check the Committee on Manpower? Eto paka pa kumanhangad sa Monday?
Uh, Mr. Madam Chairman, I have already read the functions and responsibility of the Committee on Manpower Cooperative Development. It is stated that what we have agreed upon is part of the functions and responsibility of the Committee on Manpower and Cooperative Development. If still the Honorable Rintoy has questioned, maybe he can research for himself. That's all, Madam Chairman.
Okay, next item?
Nominal vote.
Honorable Valdemoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I move, Madam Chair, may I move that all the approved resolutions in ordinance be transferred to nominal voting and approved the same?
Any second? Any motion to adjourn? Adjourn? Section?